1929205099, Zoom meeting ID 89712293538. Password BORN ALL CAPS. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within this meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. So we have a moment of silence to recognize our troops and our public safety personnel. Salute to the flag. Let's place the flag of the United States of America to your Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is that you? No, I'm not on Zoom. Okay. Am I going too close? Okay. I'm going to get started right into the, just real quick before I do the public non-agenda items. I just want to take a quick moment of personal privilege. I can't help but I have to just congratulate the Bowen High School football team for their Thanksgiving Day win. And my granddaughter, the Bowen Middle School, is having a concert tonight. I'm unable to be there, but shout out, you guys are going to kill it. Turkey trots, homeless for the holidays, I can't say enough the work they do, Greg Coria and his team, the staff of us, and all of the supporters and sponsors. And if I miss anyone else in the sports arena, I apologize, you're all awesome in my book. Okay. So, public comments on non-agenda items, do we have any this evening on our sheet? I don't think so. Anyone online? Okay. So, but public comments are allowed for up to 12 minutes at the beginning of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes to comment. This is really feedback. Board members are unable to respond due to the posting requirements of the open meeting law. So, I'm excited. It's that time of year again, and our agenda item number four is next, and that's our annual presentation from our friends and neighbors at Joint Base Cape Cod and leadership. So, I will let you start and come up to the mic. I think Marlene is working on the PowerPoint. Then we're good.
One second.
Happy to see you all.
Yeah, it's great to see you.
Yeah, it goes quick. It seems like you were just here. I know.
Completely different than seeing you on team, so it's great to be in person.
Exactly. I know I missed you all in my meeting now that Dean is the new rep.
Outstanding. We'll see you Thursday.
Yes.
All right. Well, can I, I'm good to go? Okay. Thanks. Oh, there we go, perfect. Let me just test this out real quick. All right, good. All right. So I just want to introduce myself first of all. My name is Colonel Matthew Porter. I know in the past years, we've had General Chris Foe here as the Executive Director for Joint Base Cape Cod. He has since retired, and I have recently taken his place, so I'm honored to be here and very excited. Don't have a ton to brief from my part, except for just a quick update, which many of you may already know. We've started our Contonment Area master planning effort with the Mass Task Force and Mass Development. They're going to start reaching out to stakeholders and towns to start their listening sessions and their public outreach for this project. It's going to be about two years. There's a lot of divested land from the Air Force that is either going to other military components on the base. Some will be repurposed potentially for work, you know, projects for, that'll assist not only the base, but maybe the community as well. So, some opportunity there, and we're really interested and excited to see what turns out from that. So, I think there'll be a lot more to come, and we'll have periodic updates as we go, pretty much in any type of public meeting that we have. So that's the big piece that I have to brief from now, from here on. I'll let the commanders do their piece and give you an update from there. Unless you have any questions, I may. All right.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right, I'll be followed, oh, the commanders, and I'll be followed by the Army.
Lieutenant Colonel, I'm sorry. Yeah. Thanks. Oh, taking my stuff. Good evening, everyone. I am Lieutenant Colonel Alex McDonough. I am the Deputy Commander for Camp Edwards, which is the National Guard Command on Joint Base Cape Cod, Camp Edwards. I'm also the full-time base operations manager. I took the role of Colonel Porterheld when he promoted to the Executive Director role. So, what I wanted to talk about tonight was just an overview of what our mission is to give the members of the select board and members of the audience just some familiarization of what we do at Camp Edwards, because we're a little unique amongst all of the other commands. Within Joint Base Cape Cod, our mission is training support. We are what's called a Garrison Training Center. So our job is to maintain facilities and training lands so the soldiers during their once-a-month drill and two-week annual training period can train on the various proficiencies so they can deploy, fight, and win in support of their federal mission. To accomplish that, we have numerous facilities to include barracks, dining facilities, transient training buildings with computer labs to conduct online training, as well as 15,000 acres of maneuver space, which includes five live-fire ranges, land navigation courses, rappel towers, obstacle courses, and the like. Some of the events that we posted in the last year is, are the air assault course. So the Army usually runs that down at Fort Benning. Air assault has mobile training teams, and they brought one up to us, and we had around 200 soldiers, mostly Massachusetts Guardsmen and Women, graduate from that course. So, learning how to jump out of a perfectly good helicopter. So, in addition to that, we support mobilization activities. So our soldiers in the Massachusetts Army National Guard deploy overseas quite frequently. We had around four units deploy overseas. So units will come to our installation, conduct their pre-mobilization training to include weapons qualification, and any specific training that goes towards what their specialty is, whether they're military, police, brigade-level headquarters exercising their command and control functions, military transportation, and the like. We also support those units transiting in and out with their equipment. So one of our units brought with them 60 trailers, 60 trucks, and various other pieces of equipment. That equipment now is coming back to us, so we support those units as a stage for line hauling to the port, so that equipment can go overseas. So, we're quite busy in everything we do, and it's exciting to be base manager and support all that training. Looking at the future, Camp Edwards continues to have a busy outlook. In terms of future construction, we are looking at a readiness center close to the Sandwich Gate. It's near the Utes area, not funded yet, but the design is complete, and we're fighting for funding. In terms of ranges, we have a valid project unfunded for an extension of our rifle range and 100% design on an infantry squad battle course refurbishment. So we have one. It's fallen into disrepair over the years. We're just waiting for some funding to rebuild that. Finally, just want to give an open invite to everyone. Camp Edwards hosts monthly tours from May to October, led by myself and my Natural Resources Manager Jake McCumber, where you can actually come on the installation, see what some of our training venues look like, and learn about our Natural Resources Program. We share all that information with the select board, so either follow the Camp Edwards website on Facebook, or we run ads in Cape Cod Times and the Enterprise when those start coming up, and it would be great to have more people come along. So those are usually on Fridays, four-hour tour from nine to around one, and you'll get to see behind the curtain of military installation if you've never been on one. Pending any questions from you and the chairman or the select board, or if you allow the audience to ask questions?
Well, I'll ask the select board first, if anyone would like to speak on that, or if anyone has anything to say. I think I would give you a couple minutes or a minute, but I think I'm good. I'm always, you know, impressed by your presentations. You've got a lot going over there for sure. We appreciate you coming.
It's not a quiet campus. I think some people, I think visitors to town are like, "Oh, you have a base?" Like, what do they do? A lot. It's a very active.
And the tours are amazing, actually. I took a tour on back and back, and Paul and General Foe way back when, and I was impressed. I really enjoyed it. I think anybody that hasn't been out on base should take advantage of that, because it's, you know, it's great to see what they're doing and how impressive the work they are doing is over there.
All right, I'll be followed by, one second.
Good evening. Colonel Mike Kelly from the 102nd Intel Wing, specifically the 102nd Mission Support Group on here on behalf of Colonel St. Jean, our wing commander. You can go to the next slide.
Do you have the clicker?
Oh, it's a clicker. All right. So there's our mission and vision statement. Essentially, so we are Air Force, but we are Air National Guard. So, like many Air National Guard constructs, if you see the military manning, usually full-time support is about one-third of that. So, it's a 1,200-person wing. We've got about 400 on a given, say, Tuesday. 400 of us are full-time in the wing. Primarily, the purpose of the full-time manning is to train our traditional guardsmen, the ones that do come in on the weekends, but kind of like what we just mentioned here with the Army. They may not know that the Air National Guard is still out there. While we're not generating 14 sorties a day anymore over the skies, the intelligence mission has actually been much busier for the last 15 or 17 years. So, a lot of the full-time support on the base are doing the 24/7 federal intelligence missions that we'll get into here. So, we're broken into five different groups. I'll just step through them right there. The 102nd ISR group are Intelligence Surveillance and Reconnaissance Group. That unit has been activated since 2009, so we're on their 17th year being mobilized. Most of it's overnight, and when they, that kind of ISR work, you'll see the picture of the U-2 there. So not only gathering intelligence from something 60,000 feet or above, just supporting combat commanders across the globe on a nightly basis, as a matter of fact, right now. And they are assigned to long-term problem sets that say the Pacific of the European Commander is interested in. So instead of chasing down terrorism, the war on terror that we supported for the last 20 years, now it's more of a peer adversary, where they're looking at any kind of intel where they come from an aircraft like that, satellite, terrestrial, long-term problem sets, and providing that information for adversary movement. With different, the 202nd ISR group, which came online around 2016 or so, that is another intelligence group. That's about 200 airmen. The 102 ISRG is just shy of 400. The 202 is different, where they just look at cyber effects. So, not hacking or anything like that, it's not offensive cyber, but defensive cyber and putting together target packages through adversary networks that offensive cyber would take on. And they are mobilized on a yearly basis as well. The 253rd Engineering Installation Group, so those, that is primarily comm professionals, that is mostly a part-time workforce. They mobilize to go overseas. The two ISR groups that I spun through, they primarily have an at-home mission, so they get mobilized to home station every year. The 253rd, if you think about a air-based, austere environment that needs cabling run underground or up telephone poles, that's essentially what those airmen do. They'll go all over the world, have a rest and communications infrastructure. The 102nd Medical Group, about 100 airmen or so, primarily they're there to make sure that we're fit and we're ready to be mobilized, to make sure that we're up to date with our vaccinations and shots. But more specifically, they do have a homeland response function in there with a medical group that's specifically there for domestic operations that are linked to FEMA Region 1. And then lastly, the 102nd Mission Support Group, that's the group I'm commander of. That's basically everybody that makes everything run for the base. We have an expeditionary still set, so about every four years, we'll send about 100 or so airmen overseas. So our airmen just came home. They left around October of last year and came home in the summertime. But they are fragged out into six different squadrons in there. So, a similar engineering is kind of exactly what you'd say wartime contingent. It would be runway repair, runway construction, building up a bear base. Here, they basically make sure that the water's running and the electricity is running. Security forces, those are our defenders, protecting the base both home and abroad. Logistics provides us transportation, water pool, cargo deployment, processing personnel overseas. Communication is base comm, so I just drive the other group. They're the ones that kind of lay the infrastructure down. Base comm is the one that takes care of the infrastructure that's already been established, whether that be cybersecurity or just making sure you have connectivity. Personnel is kind of what it sounds, it manages people's personnel functions, but they also provide us our services, flight or child hall services. And then the one kind of offshoot is PML. That's a precision measurement lab. That is solely civilians, the Department of War civilians. They aren't really tied to this mission, but they are a regional lab, full-time with about 40 individuals, and they calibrate equipment for about 17 different flying lanes all the way down to the East Coast. So whether you're flying F-35s, C-130s, anything like that, all the test equipment that keeps those aircraft running, all their equipment is either shipped here for that lab to make sure that they're calibrated on. As far as future, kind of what Colonel Porter and Colonel McDonough mentioned, footprint of Otis Air National Guard bases are projected to expand anywhere. We do have some pieces of property outside of our main fence line, because we're down near the Fountain of the Cape, now the Gipps Gate. We don't look to expand to that. If anything, we looked at divesting some of the land outside of that. Any kind of major construction is within our footprint, and we hope to provide some synergy with, now that there's, hopefully, F-35s bedded down on the western part of the state, and also F-35s up in Burlington. Those fifth-gen fighters have a lot of capabilities other than weapons, so we hope that being in a tolerance wing, that we can, we can train with them here in the future. Not bedding them down here, but being able to train with the airspace on the Cape. Any questions?
Select board?
I'm sorry?
The select board, any questions first? All right, hearing none, thank you. Very good. Appreciate it.
Hi, good evening. I'm Major Ron Miller. I'm the Deputy Commander of Cape Cod Space Force Station, active duty United States Space Force. We represent the upgraded early warning radar that's located just on the other side of the Sagamore Bridge. We have a small 100-acre plot of land that we lease from Joint Base Cape Cod, and alongside my partners, we're part of the military community, just like all of them. I'm actually proud to see an uncle of mine in the audience here is going to be speaking on behalf. But one of the big things that I'd like to talk about tonight, as a reminder of one of our core missions and what we provide the United States for national defense, I'd like to kind of just reiterate that we are part of the community. Our students or our kids, they go to the Bourne School Districts, they go all throughout Sandwich, where the coaches at, you know, Gallow Ice Arena, our kids are out there, you know, every night playing ice hockey. But we're fully integrated. You may not, we may not be wearing our uniforms out in the community, but we are, we are part of the community here. I own a house in Markston's Mills, and my daughter will be going up here to Kick Tech too, hopefully, and so really happy to be part of this. So thank you for allowing us to speak. But as a reminder, Cape Cod Space Force Station, while in name it's new over the last couple of years, and I'm sure it was the Space Force Station last time we briefed, but we've been around the community since 1980. We've been 24/7, 365, national defense mission as the United States' only East Coast radar, performing missile warning, missile defense, and space domain awareness for the United States. So, of note, in the past year, we had tracked 50 active launches, whether that's a launch of a submarine out of the Arctic Sea, or a submarine out of the Atlantic, or any of the number of launches that we see out of Cape Canaveral, Florida. We have a wide breadth of coverage that we actively track for either missiles, rockets, anything that's going up into space, but primarily we're performing our 365 space domain awareness mission, which is allowing us to track all of the space debris, all of the satellites, rockets, junk, everything up in space, untold thousands of objects up there. That's our primary mission that we're doing, that our guardians are working every day. But a little bit more about Cape Cod Space Force Station. We have about 150 folks, that's made up of active-duty United States Space Force guardians, United States Air Force, security forces, defenders that guard our installation. We have government civilians, and we also have about 70 civilian contractors as part of our operations and maintenance contract executed through Indigm Incorporated. We are a binational team, so we do have Canadian representatives through an exchange program between the United States and Canada, the same way we have in NORAD and Cheyenne Mountain in Colorado. It's a binational partnership for the defense of North America. But we're fully integrated in that, and they're actually on crew right now. They're guarding the East Coast right now in Sagamore. We are part of a broader Space Force Delta. Instead of the space, the Air Force, which has wings, we have deltas, we call them deltas. Our headquarters is out of Colorado Springs in Colorado. We actually have the pleasure to entertain our commander on Thursday and Friday, our O6 level that'll be able to join the distinguished gentleman that are speaking today as well. But we have full support across the United States for the continued success of this mission. So, a little bit about our local community and the impacts that we're having here. Just in the last year alone, we've contributed $4.1 million through our annual operating budget to local HVAC plumbers, constructions. We have a number of ongoing projects right now to replace our roof. We have replacing all of our latrines, which haven't been updated since 1980. So, but those are all local contractors coming from the Cape and just off the Cape, all executing these big-dollar contracts for us, and they're making a substantial impact. So we very much appreciate it, and we're providing fantastic reviews where we can, and just to continue that collaboration that we have with the local economy. Again, the, we are fully, we have tons of support agreements with local fire and law enforcement. As a small installation, we are located a little bit separately from Joint Base Cape Cod. We have a single point of entry, which is right across from Market Basket on the exit. You may see some of us turning in there, trying to get out. We're fully integrated with the Massachusetts Governor's Office, trying to ensure that the Cape Cod Bridge Project does not impede on any of the free flow of traffic in and out for emergency vehicles, and allowing for the free flow of traffic on and off of six as well, Route 6. But we have had economic impact, two of the four turbines, the wind turbines that are located on the Cape side by the Sagamore Bridge, those are also ours. We're going to be going through a large project to plug those directly into our secondary power source as well. So we're very much looking forward to being part of the community with that. You might see that entitled, "The Microgrid Project," as some public forums opened up with that. Additionally, for the next year, we have about $6.3 million more of future projects, and pause for any questions.
Select board, any questions from the select board? Hearing none? All right, thank you very much. Great, great.
Hi, good evening. I am Captain Roger Mason. I'm the commanding officer of Coast Guard Base Cape Cod. Thank you for having us. It's wonderful to be out here. Happy to be engaging with the public again after a brief shutdown, so thanks for adjusting your schedule to accommodate us. I'll echo what the major just said. We too are parts of the community, and Coast Guard Base Cape Cod does administer our housing unit, or our housing complex on Joint Base Cape Cod. We've got about 125 families that actually rely having their own school system, and so thank you for having us and for all of the moral education opportunities that you provide our students. Coast Guard Base Cape Cod was established in 2014. Coast Guard has obviously been on Joint Base Cape Cod or Otis for much longer than that. Captain Lackwood's is going to talk about the air station, but they started back in the 1970s. In 2014, however, the decision was made for the Coast Guard to split off the mission support element to alleviate the commanding officer of Coast Guard Air Station Cape Cod from some of the mission support nuances, like running a housing complex. So 2014 is when we stood up. We're actually the second-largest base in terms of land control for the Coast Guard. Pretty impressive that the only base that's larger than us is actually located up in Kodiak, Alaska, but this is the only place where the Coast Guard maintains and operates a runway. The Coast Guard's the maintainers, and we plow that runway, we make sure the asphalt is adequate for the aircraft. That's the only place in the country where we're doing that level of maintenance, so pretty neat that it's happening right here on Cape Cod. There are a number of Coast Guard entities on Base Cape Cod in addition to the air station you're going to hear from in just a minute, and I'll let Captain Lackwood speak to his mission, but just briefly, other major units that we have aboard Joint Base Cape Cod include the Maritime Safety and Security Team Cape Cod. They're an anti-terrorism deployable force. They are used all over the country to support a whole host of anti-terrorism events and functions. And so notably, just in the recent presidential election, they were providing security anytime either of the campaigns were anywhere close to the war. So they were deploying from the Great Lakes down to Florida and everywhere in between. Port Security Unit 301 is an expeditionary force that augments the Navy to provide security when the Navy is in the air. They operate smaller boats that are armed, a little more agile than some of the Navy assets, so they typically deploy with the Navy to provide them security. They're a reserve force, but there is an active-duty contingent aboard Joint Base Cape Cod. They drill a couple times a month and have some longer drills for two weeks every year. There's also a small Northeast Regional Fisheries Training Center, so that is an educational training center where boarding team members, the boarding officers, will come to learn about the nuances of fisheries law enforcement pertinent to the New England fishery. So they've got a classroom and a number of instructors that are based out of Joint Base Cape Cod. And then finally, Maritime Safety Unit Cape Cod investigates foreign casualties in the Cape Cod area, and they work for Sector Southeastern New England, which is based out of Woods Hole. My command has six different departments. Facilities Engineering is probably the largest of that kind, with about 16 individuals that maintain 43 commercial buildings and about 125 homes throughout the base, including all of the roadways, the airfield as I spoke about already. Base operations includes our comptroller, so our budget officer. It also includes our galley, where we are open seven days a week, providing food to not only the Coast Guard, but all of the Joint Base commands. The galley that the Army operates in the dining facility is operated only when they have a large build contingent, but our galley is open 365 days a year. We've got a small contracting contingent that supports a bunch of activities, much again like the major was speaking about in the Space Force, or a major economic driver for the area to maintain those facilities and deconstruction on base. That's all executed out of our contracting. Our electronic support department doesn't only support us locally in Joint Base Cape Cod, but they're really supporting Coast Guard units, really throughout all of Massachusetts and Rhode Island, fixing small boats and Coast Guard cutters and their electronics. Personnel support, I talked about housing a little bit, but we also administer our morale, well-being, our morale wellness and recreation program, to include our Child Development Center, where we see about 60 children every day, predominantly Coast Guard children, but we also support children from the other services as well. And then finally, we have a medical department. We run a fully functioning clinic to include dental care, a pharmacy, and physician's assistance and actual flight surgeons too. So, that is Coast Guard Base Cape Cod. If there are no questions, I will let Captain Lackwood speak about the exciting aviation mission.
Any hands?
No hands.
No hands.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Colonel Porter's favorite part of the brief. Let the aviation people close it out, right? Everyone's in the booth? All right. Here we go. So, Captain Mike Lackwood, commanding officer, Coast Guard Air Station Cape Cod. This is my second tour. This is my second tour at the air station. Used to fly the jets here when the Air Force had the jets here as well, and I'm now back 15 years later flying the top-left prop plane, our CASA HC-144 Ocean Sentry. We have three of those in our unit. You'll hold the MH-60. We have three of those as well. And we'll go into, the picture on the right represents about half our crew. We have about 200 active-duty military reservists and civilians at our unit that stand and watch 24 hours a day on both of those aircraft, and we'll get into those missions a little bit. Our patrol area, what we are responsible for, is from New Jersey all the way to the Canadian border, 1,500 miles offshore. So we're almost touching places like Bermuda and Canada, obviously, while we're doing our missions in the offshore environment in some severely bad weather. This is the most desired air station in the United States Coast Guard. Much of that is because of you all. I know we've kind of gone through, we're part of the community, I'm not going to go through, how many of our kids got low rain and everything, but I will say, this is one of the most military-friendly supported communities in the entire United States and I have been a part of. So that is why we have a very desired location, we have a very good mission, we fly through some challenging weather, like tonight, freezing levels are getting down lower as we speak, and that's why people want to be here, and we've got a great crew. And I'll leave it at that. We also have the largest civilian auxiliary contingent in the United States Coast Guard. So the most civilian planes and volunteers in the aviation industry supporting us as well at our unit. So what do we do? One thing I'll touch on, though, I probably should have started with this, right, is the other cool part about the Northeast is this is the birthplace of the United States Coast Guard. Does anyone know where it was born? Anyone? You're like a teacher now. You would know that. Newburyport, Massachusetts is the first place of the modern Coast Guard. Now, I'm not going to go into the Lighthouse Church or anything, but that is right up the street, right? Our air station was in Salem, Massachusetts, up until 55 years ago, when it moved out to Cape Cod, right? The Finest Hours, everyone's saying that one, right? Bernie Weber, Station Chateau, right up the street, right? This place breathes Coast Guard history and mission. It is by far the best place to be stationed. Back to our capability, I mentioned this before, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, our aircraft and crew have to be airborne within 30 minutes for any operational case. So right now, if a case came up, that phone would ring, and I wouldn't answer it because I'm briefing you all, but our air crews will be airborne 30 minutes to effect whatever rescue, 200-something miles offshore, whatever it is. Our aircraft, I mentioned it before, six crew on our plane, endurance of eight hours, which basically means they can go about five thousand miles offshore pretty easily, do something, and come back. But again, I said 1,500 miles, right? So there's a little bit of a broker deal there of where we can go and how far we can go, and if we really stretch gases and things like that. The 60 crews, about the same kind of framework, they're airborne for about four, four and a half hours, that means they can go about 200 miles offshore, effect a medevac, a hoist or something, and get back. Three weeks ago, we sent a plane to Nantucket to top off fuel to get out to a domestic sailboat that was 247 miles east of Nantucket, to get that person out of the water and back to a hospital, right? So I put a few pictures out there. You'll probably remember someone came off the ferry a couple months back, right? A safety crew found them, got them back. There's a terrible case right off the Neshan Island there. They'll be rescuing some folks, fortunately one person didn't survive, but again, we were there to try and do our best to get there. Our aircraft have probably, as Coast Guard terms, most modern aviation ISR equipment that we can, that we fly with. We're not DOD with money, but we have some pretty capable DOD systems on these aircraft. We do intelligence work with these aircraft, we deploy with these aircraft, all that kind of stuff. And roughly, it coincides with about 250 search and rescue cases every year from our unit, from our aircraft. One thing you'll appreciate, I hope, is we do a lot of medevacs off Martha's Vineyard, Nantucket, and Block Island when the weather looks like this outside. Medflight can't fly, the Coast Guard will go over there and pick people up. We can fly directly to the pads in Boston, put them right on top of the hospitals and give them right-to-care, almost faster because our planes are a little bit faster than medflight. But we enjoy doing all those things. It's great work. The other thing I'll say is, you know, we do a lot of maritime law enforcement. We are kind of the fish cops out there a little bit too. We patrol all the fisheries areas from the Canadian border all the way down and south of the canyons off Virginia and stuff, right? So that is one of the roles we do. We monitor the Canadians, we monitor our US fishing fleet. We're trying to preserve our $14 billion fishing industry out of the Northeast, right? And that's also part of the job we do every day in patrol. Anyway, I think we've run a little bit over already. Cut there. Was there any questions, comments, concerns?
I have a quick comment, just a fun fact.
Yes.
I love that you say how long you've been in, you know, moving, but I have a story. We have an old meeting house that's in Plymouth for the tribe, and we actually have found an archive letter. So Otis has been giving back to people in our community for much longer, and we have a letter from 1958 where an old army barracks that was from your, from over at Otis was shipped over the bridge and connected to our 1838 meeting house, and it's still there today. So been contributing for quite some time, I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Very good.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
We got a few more buildings from late 1940 if you want.
Yeah, it's still kicking. It looks pretty good, I gotta say. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you so much. Hey. All right. So the next agenda item is a discussion with our town council with just some next steps regarding the issuance of our Cannabis Marijuana Host Community Agreement, HCA, reserved for social equity applicants. So I am going to divert this to town council. Give him the floor. Give Brian Bertram the floor.
So, thank you. I mean, I think you, I guess, some guidance you receive, you know, correspondence from multiple different entities at this point. You know, ultimately, we're going to have to, you know, ultimately, it's going to be your choice about whether you continue with the process, whether you reboot the process. But, you know, I'll start with, you know, just sort of the core principle here is that, you know, we need to make a decision on what we're going to do here in line with the standards that are in your policy and the standards under the law. You know, we've gotten, as I mentioned, a number of letters from two different entities with threats of litigation. I think we should start with the fact that threats of litigation are not a criterion for decision. You know, if they're dissatisfying with your decision, they always have legal remedies. But, you know, the likelihood, the fact that you may be sued, that is not a reason to decide or not decide to do something. You know, we have criteria that we apply to our decision-making processes and follow So, you know, with that said, you know, I think at this point, you know, we previously had a vote to authorize the town administrator to enter into negotiations for an HCA. You know, you've gone through this process once before. I don't think it should be a surprise to anybody that that vote did not delegate or confer authority on the town administrator to actually execute an HCA. That power still lies with you. So, you know, the town administrator's not going to do that without your say-so, and shouldn't be doing that without your say-so. You know, you're, at this point, you know, all I can tell you is, is that, you know, you have a vote of three to two to enter into negotiations with one entity, and you're trying to essentially memorialize your reasons for doing that. You know, there was certainly a discussion, but it really is good practice, particularly with a three-two vote, to actually, you know, sort of take that discussion and say, well, as a board, as a multi-member body, they can only act through a majority of members, this is why we're doing something. You know, this doesn't have to be an extensive detailed explanation. You know, can be your reason to the high level. You don't, you know, you don't have to go into great detail on this, but you're just providing sort of, you know, we had all of this discussion, and these are the reasons that we three, or, you know, whatever, the vote was three to two, so we three decided as a majority of the board that we're going to do this. Now, I'm trying to think if there's anything else in there I want to say. No, it really, it really doesn't have to be anything more detailed. It's just, it's just something to give us an idea of why you made the decision you did. And in particular, there's, you know, oftentimes in a deliberation, there are things said, there are things discussed, there are opinions given, and the whole point to a deliberation is that somebody may be persuaded, somebody may change their mind based on what's said. And so we're really just cutting through all of that to say, these are the reasons. There may have been other things said, but that's not why. And to address one of the comments that was made, this is not a sort of post hoc rationalization of anything. You know, this is us adding clarity to why we made that decision. If we can't get there, and that's sort of where I understand we're having the problem, and we need to figure out where we go from there, because, you know, it's really going to be difficult going forward if we can't even agree on why we did something, if we're defending that, or if there's a complaint filed with the Cannabis Control Commission or whatever else. And look, I mean, I think at this point, it's pretty safe to say, somebody's going to be upset with this decision. You know, we're not going to make everybody happy here. Somebody is going to, you know, be unhappy with this, and they may take legal action in some form. You know, that is what it is at this. You know, the purpose here is to do the best we can do, and then we'll deal with the outcome of that. I'm hesitant to have you reboot this process just because, you know, this in and of itself for social equity applicants is already sort of a, you know, a second go at it. You know, we didn't issue the social equity license the first time around, and, you know, we didn't do so because we wanted to get this process right. We wanted to do the best that we could do, and that was certainly a fine decision at the time, but we really don't want to keep carrying this on in perpetuity. So I would encourage you to have that discussion, see if we can just find that sort of general list of reasons, you know, for why we chose to enter into HCA negotiations with this particular MC. And if we issue that, or if we can come to that consensus as a majority of the board, then there's no reason that the town administrator can't get a vote at that, you know, you can't vote the town administrator at that point to either execute it on your behalf, or I suppose you could all execute it. You know, that's sort of where we're proceeding at this point. If you can't get to that point, then, you know, maybe we can talk further once we get there about, you know, what, where do we go from there? You know, how do we restart this process? Knowing that we're likely to have some or all of the same applicants, and we've already venge through this a couple of times, to maybe sort of minimize the impact of this. I think we also need to think about, you know, what kind of went wrong this time, as to why we thought we had a consensus, but we couldn't get there. I do want to point out in that regard that, you know, we have these scoring matrices. They have numbers attached to them, but they're really not quantitative when you get down to it. You know, we've got, you know, almost exclusively categories that are qualitative discretionary decisions that you're making about how to score somebody. And at the end of the day, you're assigning numerical scores sort of based on the way you do it qualitatively again. You know, it has sort of this outward appearance of, you know, having, I mean, it does have structure, and it has this outward appearance of maybe being a little more formal than it is when you get down to it. It gives you a structure, it gives you a way to explain your decision-making. But at the end of the day, you know, the reason we want to see the statement reasons is that this really is your deliberation, and it really is, you're sort of explaining how we got from these numbers that different individuals may treat differently to a final consensus decision of a majority of the board. So that's one of my observations on this. It is a discretionary thing, who you choose. You know, in a perfect world, we have great applicants all around, and, you know, we have to make a hard choice, and somebody's going to be upset, somebody's not going to be happy about it, and we're going to give reasons for making that choice, and there may be a consequence of somebody exercising a legal right to challenge that. That is what it is. But I really would encourage you to try to have a little more deliberation, see if you can reach a consensus. If you truly cannot, then we probably do need to find a path to sort of restart this at some stage, because, you know, it's pretty, even if we go with the buy-or-mate at this point, I think we're going to have a hard time moving forward, sort of defending it as the decision of the board when we can't even explain our decision. And I can tell you, when I defend things in any forum, I can't substitute my joke or my reasons for yours. I need you to give me your reasons, because it is your decision. So that's kind of my observations on this. To some extent, this is still a decision by the board as policy as to how it wants to deal with this. I'm happy to answer questions along the way, be present for these deliberations. And, you know, I just close by saying, look, you know, it's not always a bad thing that we're going through this in so much detail. I mean, so often, government is criticized for sort of doing things quickly and not paying a lot of attention, and you guys have really gotten into the weeds on this one. And anything else is said, there's a lot of deliberation going on about this choice, so.
Okay. All right. So tonight is just our conversation, and we were just listening, you know, having the discussion with Brian and the town council. I guess I can go around the room, and the Select Board can maybe speak. I mean, we're not deliberating this this evening. Is that the thought, that we start this all over tonight, or are we just listening to Brian and then kind of sleeping on it and trying to get our thoughts together for our next set of deliberations? Where are we going? So I guess I would start up in, up in virtual land maybe, and MJ, maybe you could speak first, I know, or Peter, or anyone who's ready.
I can speak. I think, I think Brian gave us some good advice. I think we went through a deliberative process. We set a process, we followed the process, we made a decision. There was a majority decision of the board. Once the majority of the board decides, that's the decision of the board. When we talk about our reasons for why we made the decision, the reasons that we should be describing are the reasons that the majority of the board members made the decision. And for me, part of the hang-up in the discussions has been the members who were in the minority say, well, that's not what I thought, but the board made a decision as a majority. And once that happens, it's the responsibility of the board members to support that decision and to explain that decision so the board can move forward. So I have not changed my position on my recommendation for who should be granted a social equity license. I am comfortable with the deliberative document as it was refined. We had a draft document, we made some, we deliberated on that, we made some changes to the draft document. I think it accurately describes the decision that was made by the majority of the board. My preference is that the board stand with the decision that was made and sign the HCA agreement that was accepted with no changes by the entity that we said we would award to. So I was one of the majority. I don't know how the rest of the people that were in the majority feel at this point. And I think that's something that we need to confirm. If the majority of the board still feels that they would make the same decision, that they stand with their recommendation, I think that's an important piece of information to know. If that is no longer true, then we're in a different situation. But I have not changed my recommendation, and I would like the board to proceed with the process that we established as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, MJ. Peter? Thank you, MJ. Peter?
Yes, MJ said it best, and I agree with everything that she's, that she has said. I still stand by my scores. I know some people feel that I, that I could not be, I could not be neutral because of my friendship with one of the quote-unquote applicants. But I can say that through my time, my times scoring, and my time in my reasoning, evaluating my reasoning for it, that this, that Born Cannabis was the best candidate, period. Even if I were to go back and re-score again and make it a little more palatable for everybody, it's still not going to change. Of the, of the four, Born Cannabis was the best overall for, you know, for people of born. And that's not going to change with me. I mean, they had the most stable business, they had the best location, they had the best employee, you know, media, you know, employee plan to help the affordable housing. I mean, we know, and, and, in fact, Owen Sullivan in his most recent article last week, or a couple weeks ago in the Boonard Prize, the most recent was accurate of the way that I felt. And so, I refer back to that article as well. I just, I don't know, it's high, right? You know, like what MJ said, not everybody should be happy through this process. There was only room for one. And in the future, as a separate agenda, we may want to look at a span in change of the zoning bylaw and the, and the general bylaw, and see about opening up more applicants. Because it's obvious at one point, through the scoring matrix, that the other four were folks, spoke fairly highly of the Buzzards Bay applicants. And who knows, that maybe we ought to add more stores to this as soon as possible, because I feel that the industry is growing, and we need to provide a service, you know, that, but that's another conversation for another day. But I do stand by my scoring, I do stand by my recommendation. And I, like you said, I also stand by the fact that Born Cannabis is the best of the four.
My position hasn't changed either. You know, I was, I was in the minority. MJ, I do understand what you're saying about, you know, the majority vote of the board. I still struggle with the process and how it unfolded. I still struggle with equity in that process. I don't think there was. I struggle with the, you know, yes, we've had long discussions and deliberations about the reasons why or why not we chose each of the individual applicants and given them those scores. I still strongly feel NLM is, is the stronger candidate. Cape Cod was second for me, still given a very high score. We still need to vote, though, on those reasons why we did or did not choose each of the candidates. I don't believe that vote has taken place, correct?
No, we did not vote on that last time, because we were sort of at a standstill in regards to the whole situation.
Right, right, right. But the two, I'd say two things that we need, two decision-making, right, tonight, or not tonight, whenever the case may be. One, execute the HCA as voted by the board. And two, voting on the reasons for public posting. Those are the two things that I, that, that we need to make decisions on this evening. But my, my decision and my, my stand stays the same, that I, I have questions about the process, about the equity of the process.
Gee.
So, I did change my mind. And I do feel that we have to stand behind whatever decision we make in the, in the long run, of course. We have to act as a team. However, during, since the scoring and through deliberations and through this process, I have felt more, less and less comfortable with how things unfolded. And I think ideally, even though it wasn't even thrilling for Brian to hear, or I'm sure the struggle of going through the application process for everyone, it's, it's a lot of work, no doubt. But I feel like we need to start over again. I don't feel comfortable relying solely on the scores and the numbers and talking about all that, as part of, I have a right to change my mind. And pulling back and looking at the bigger picture, as my work on the planning board unfolded, people in Buzzards Bay did not want, I think if we didn't pull that out of the downtown district, we wouldn't have been able to pass, you know, change the bylaws and so forth, and have that overlay district. So I think that we really need to reflect on that as well. And I think a better deliberation process would, would allow that to come out. So, I, I think I feel more strongly, if not, I feel more strongly today than I did, that I need to stand with my decision to vote against issuing the HCA at this point. And the more we talk about the narrative, and the more I hear, you know, Peter, I really appreciate your comments, and all the work you've done, and you have borne at best, I'm sure, in your heart. But I want to hear more about why other businesses were not chosen versus why Born Cannabis was the one to pick. That's not what our role should be. We're not here to pitch for one company versus another. We're here to deliberate and choose who the best fit is for the town. So.
So, you've changed your...
So, that's why, yeah. I couldn't support the narrative as it stands.
So, I too was in the minority, and my choice was NLM. And I, and I was very clear from the beginning, that, you know, all of the candidates that we were able, it would have been wonderful to be able to give everybody the HCA. My choice was based on location. We have, we have an HCA on MacArthur Boulevard. So, my choice was based on the, as we said, they were very close in scores as well. Born Cannabis was my second, right? NLM was my first. A lot of it for the reason that we split them up. We have to make sure that people can access these businesses, is really what it was about. So, and the process to me as well, it was frustrating. And I don't feel it was equitable or fair in many ways, for obvious reasons that a lot of people have seen and shared publicly and otherwise. So, as much as I would hate to say I'd have to go back, I mean, I think at this point, the majority no longer stands. So, we have to figure out next steps, and what does that look like? So, we obviously can't accept the narrative if the majority vote is going to change. So, I don't know what the next, oh, I see, I see Brian's hand. See, I can see pretty good up there, even though I don't monitor the chat, right?
Yeah, I don't know exactly what the next steps are. You know, don't worry, Gene, I'm not, I'm not really that upset. I think it's most important that we get this right, and that we're all comfortable with our decision. So, I think, you know, you know, the real question at this point is, you know, whether we're just sort of rebooting the deliberations or rebooting the entire process. And, you know, I'm not, I'm just your counsel. It's really a question of what you want to do. But I would suggest that, you know, rebooting the entire process and putting a whole nother round of applicants through the interviews and stuff again, may not be worthwhile, just given that it seems that our concerns center more around the deliberations and finding the right result for the board. And that perhaps the discussion should center on, you know, if we're going to sort of redeliberate here, rethink about this a little bit more. You know, what is the structure for that that sort of makes us more comfortable in reaching a result? And maybe that gets us to an end result faster than just sort of completely reboot on this.
Okay. Interesting. So, do we put this on for some thought and another agenda item, so that we can figure out that? Yeah?
I think that would be...
That makes no sense. Is that, MJ, Peter, any more thoughts on? I mean, obviously, we have to have another meeting to discuss further and debate and all of those things, once we figure out what our process may be from here. Of course, none of us would want to start it over, but, yeah.
We want to have faith in the process at the same time, and have the applicants have faith in what's happening.
And maybe having additional deliberations going to come, and, and the, and the outcome might be the same.
Maybe the same, right?
But I think maybe spending more time on rebooting the deliberations is a, is a pathway that, that we might want to explore.
I think that would be better. That's more transparent.
Okay. So, we'll be taking no votes this evening, and we will add this for a future agenda item. We really appreciate everybody's patience, and we know this has been a tough call. But, you know, this, we take this very seriously. And if we didn't care about the town and everyone in it, you know, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be here today. So, it's unfortunate. And I know, as Brian said, it is, you know, it's not going to make everyone happy, and that's impossible, I know. So, hopefully, we can come up with a fair and an equitable solution that, that makes it work, without having to re-turn the clock back to 1925.
Step one.
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion or thought from the board on this? If not, I'll move on to this agenda item.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure, of course.
And it, it has to do with something that Jean said, that she had changed her mind. So, Jean, are you saying that Born Cannabis is no longer your recommended choice for the whole community?
I changed my mind. I wasn't comfortable with the narrative. Then I couldn't support it.
Well, I'm not talking about the narrative. I'm talking about your recommendation.
I think...
For who should receive the whole community agreement.
I think we should save that for deliberations.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you all for that. Okay. So, next, we have a petition for work on private way Tara Terrace and Eldridge Ave extension to include betterments. And I know Mr. Tim Leidens here, too.
Chair, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, board. I'm Tim Leidens at the Town of One Engineering Department, on behalf of the town, in my support role, supporting DPW as well as the Town Administrator's Office. The Sunset Acres subdivisions off of Clay Pond Road have kind of been in my orbit for a long time since I've worked here. The roads are in disrepair. We've had a working group work with the town over the past 10 years in some iteration, in one form or another, to try to get it repaired. We worked with this working group over the past 12 months to analyze what their best approach would be. We put a lot of work into this. After a lot of discussion, and where, where temporary private repair would go, and a road taking would go, we received a petition this summer with more than 50% signatures, to do a temporary repair at Tara Terrace, as well as Eldridge Road and Eld, Eldridge Road, Eldridge Ave, Eldridge Road Extension?
Eldridge Street.
All right. There's too many, too many Eldridge's roads in this, it just sounds like horrible. Losing my place there. But...
There's many wings.
So, we're here tonight because we sent out notices, but I will tell you right now, they were later than I would like them to have been, and there have been notices that were sent to the wrong houses. So, it would be my, my recommendation that we re-note these orders and come back at another time. But I think it's a good opportunity to get this out there and have some discussion. So, petition for Tara Terrace, for a total of 84, 8,488 feet, plus or minus, we had 53% signatures for frontage. And for Eldridge Ave and Eldridge Ave Extension, we had 2,131 street, Eldridge Street, 55%. I'll make that change when I get back. That being said, they did meet the criteria. We still have a petition with those signatures. DPW Director, myself, we hired a third party to come up and do an assessment of the work that would be necessary. It came in somewhere about, you know, a million dollars, plus or minus. In order to take the road, it was more like 2 million. So, it's a big disparity between the numbers. That being said, I mean, it would be minor foundational work. We'd be doing a milling overlay. There'd be some adjustments to drainage. Like I said, we have over 10,000 feet of linear feet of frontage. So, it's about a mile total, a little away. We, you know, be hoping to put an article on this Amel Town meeting, and maybe do the work in the spring, in the fall, or maybe the following spring. We got the estimate that we worked with. We refined and used the state estimates as well as the county estimates. So, we were going to go out to bid. We knew that we were using a higher number. We have a contingency on that number. Each home is going to pay their proportion of the frontages. That being said, they have 20 years to pay that, that betterment. So, I know I've had a lot of calls over the past couple of days for people to educate themselves. So, I will reiterate that if there's anybody else that would like to have more information, feel free to email me or call me instead of the time. And we can maybe sit down and go over a lot of the granular information with the betterment. MGL Chapter 80 is, is what gives us this authority to do, to spend public tax money on private property. So, with Section 3.1.28, temporary repairs of private ways are own-town bylaws. They have followed all of the petition process.
Okay. Chair, I just wanted to acknowledge that we did receive some emails regarding this agenda item from, there were four emails, Kara Olson, and Kara Elizabeth, Nicole Hill, and Gabrielle Farakal Kanas.
Okay. And those were, those were correspondence that were...
They're correspondence regarding the, regarding the agenda item, and concerns about the, what Tim is speaking about the betterment.
Both the betterments, sure.
Questions, yeah. Yeah. And those would be, they'll be up on the website by...
They'll be in correspondence for the people to read.
Yeah.
Okay. Any comment or thoughts from the select board on Zoom, virtual land? I do see a hand. Go ahead, MJ.
Oh, thank you. Jim, I have a question. Does the estimate for the road repairs include having some sort of as-built document at the conclusion as a record?
No, this, typically, we wouldn't do that for the temporary repair betterment.
Okay. And, and you said that the estimate, the $1 million estimate for the temporary repair, would not qualify this, these roads for being accepted by the town as public ways?
Correct.
That that, that work would require additional work?
Yeah. So, the additional work would be some more stormwater remediation, as well as more foundational work below a micro, a milling and overlay?
Okay. I just want to make sure that the residents are clear about, you know, about what's being provided. Is, is the drainage work needed on these roads?
We don't know, we, we didn't know enough at the time, because we would normally have a stormwater review by the petitioners for a road taking. And we did try, do our best to educate the working group on what that would entail. And that is a lot of front-end work, as we know from our past experience with the Cassett Woods subdivision. So, there's a little bit of a variable there on what we didn't know what the work would be if we were to do a road taking.
Okay. And so, you sent out some notices to people. Do, do, do you need 50% of the homeowners to accept a betterment amount? What's the next step here?
We have a petition of greater than 50% of the linear frontage.
Okay.
Therefore, we would take a vote, but the select board would take a vote to put an article on the town meeting, if I'm correct.
That's the next step.
And there's, there's, you're just sort of a fine letter for letting the people know what their individual homeowner cost is.
Yes. So, and to leapfrog off that, so we sent out the number for the estimated betterment. That is... That is a price that we are not allowed to exceed once we assess that estimated betterment after town meeting. So basically, what they see is, I always call it the sticker shock price because it's the highest price that they'll see. Could we meet that number? Yes, we could. But typically, the betterments come in at a lesser number than that.
Is there an opportunity for someone who signed the petition to withdraw once they see the numbers?
As far as I understand, yes. I mean, until... Maybe you...
Until our vote.
You vote, yeah, or...
Well, until our vote or until town meeting?
I couldn't tell you the specifics on that.
Okay.
Okay. Peter?
Well, they can always do a final vote at town meeting.
Right.
Right? So it's a moot point.
Yeah, you have an article.
Yeah. If we move the article to town meeting, it's still a yes or no by anyone who signed it or didn't sign it.
Exactly.
Correct.
We've never had that happen.
They do have the final vote.
We've never had that happen, at least in my experience.
All right. Peter, any thoughts? I know, is he there? Oh, he's still there. His desk.
Yes. My question is, is the temporary repair versus the long-term repair, what is the difference in longevity for it? You know, are we talking a tenure fix and they're going to be back to safety again? Or is this temporary repair could last longer than that? And the other question is, is part of the sticker shock, how much is the contingency that is part of this proposal?
So the contingency for the price was 30% of the betterment.
So some potential, if you don't want to continue, there's a real chance that that number could be one-third less?
It'd be closer to 800,000 instead of the million.
Well, I would say, you could have a significant savings, is what my point is. Some people are nervous that they can't afford what they have right now, but in reality, the real number may be different, but we won't know till the end of the project.
Correct.
Correct.
Henry, vice chair?
I don't have any additional questions.
No.
But we're not ready to vote, correct? Because we want to allow opportunity for the public, for the notices to go up.
Okay.
Anna, Anna, did you get my answer on the short-term versus long-term fix? What is the life expectancy of this to me?
So I'd be hard-pressed to give a guarantee on the work that's being done. Obviously, our subdivision standard is a standard that is, I think, more scrutiny than what we're doing for the temporary repair. So if we were to do a road taking, that's why we would do more work on the foundational components of it. But as far as doing this temporary repair, I can't say it's going to last 15 years or 16 years. I... That's not... You know, typically, we understand a road that's not traveled by, you know, trucks and main highways and a collector road, you know, these typically last 20, 25, 30 years, you know, before you start seeing problems. But also, a maintenance program for these private roads, I can't stress enough how much it's important to maintain the investment. The town will not be doing that. You know, we saw the Cassett Woods come before us, and their road was in such good repair since 1990 because they did a crack seal program. They did catch basin cleanings twice a year. I mean, keeping the catch basins clean and letting the water infiltrate into the ground keeps it from frost heaving and having the frozen, you know, flexible pavement. I mean, people talk about, you know, New England roads, and it's not from a lack of maintenance. It's the environmental conditions and the flexible pavement material that we use that leads to that. So I can't put a date, and I can't. But we're going to be there. We're going to be doing QAQC from DPW's standpoint. We also have whoever's doing the work provides inspection and a narrative to us, you know, daily. So we will have correspondence and understanding and eyes on the road when it's being installed to make sure we're getting our best product.
All right. Answer your question, Peter. Best as Tim could there.
Yes, I understand, and it's good that we're pushing this over to another meeting. But I will say that overall, this is a project that's long overdue just for the public, just for public safety reasons and for the residents in the area. You know, those roads are beyond disrepair, and some sort of maintenance needs to be done just, you know, just for the protection of the investment of the property owners over there and just for everything to be safe. I mean, I can imagine snowplows, trucks going through in the winter, getting potholes, and then their heads are hitting the seam, and also, we got people out on work-related injuries. Or scoop outs, you know, going down a road, and with kids, and all of a sudden, it gets, you know, damaged, and all of a sudden, the kids get injured. So I think the improvements in that subdivision are very long overdue. We just got to figure out a way to get it done with the least financial impact as possible and make it affordable, but lasts for a while as well. So I think this is good that this discussion is happening now.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, I think for myself, you know, I've been over there. My granddaughter has friends over there. Them roads are tough. They are in need of repair, no doubt. But I kind of see both sides, you know, too, because I can understand the financial impact for people who could not afford the betterment as well, you know? It's a lot of money when you're struggling. It's a tough time for people. So I do see both sides, but those roads are in rough shape. So this is a good project if we can get a good consensus on it. And we have more to do, obviously, and you need to send out the notice. So I think we're not going to vote this evening, and if everybody's all set and the comments...
I got a couple.
Sure. Did you want to come up and say a couple of things? Sure.
Well, I can just say it from here.
You have to come to the mic. I'm sorry.
So they can hear you. That mic's for the online.
I live on Tara Terrace.
Your name, please.
For one time. He also mentioned something about all these petitions and people signing and so forth. All the neighbors that I have never signed any petitions, so I don't know where this 50% of betters coming from. That's number one. Number two, according to what I understand, is we own that portion of the frontage of our properties. Each of us. You would own, if you're on my side, the other people on the other side. We each own that road for the 100 feet. If that's the case, number one, why can't we just take care of our own properties instead of have to pay crazy money to be paying other people's property? Where I am, from all the way down, I say at least seven or eight houses down, there's no problem. We got one little pothole that we're already going to fix. We got a price of $500. So they want to charge me $10,000, my neighbor $10,000, my other neighbor $10,000. We're talking about $60,000 to fix a little pothole that's going to cost $500. Now, I agree that Eldridge Street, which is not mine and has nothing to do with Tara Terrace, is the definite problem. It's been going on for years and years, and nobody's ever done it. Myself and the neighbor on Eldridge Street, Andy, we also fixed that ourselves to help them out. We did it ourselves. It lasted only a couple of years because, I mean, we didn't tire and do it perfectly, but it was passable, and it's still passable tonight if you go by there. It's not a question you're going to fall in a sinkhole and you're never going to find your car again. It's not like that. And it's at the intersection where the other two roads come in. So these other roads aren't involved either. They don't have to worry. We're going to fix everything for them. I just don't see it. I think we should be responsible for the frontage of our property to maintain safety and passability on that front part, and we should have to pay for that ourselves. It's part of our property, just like your driveway is part of your property. Pretty soon, they're going to say we're going to do everybody's driveway because they don't like the way it is. That's not the way it is. So now, if I'm paying $10,000 and it's only costing $500 to do my portion, but yet in Eldridge Street, they let it go so long, it's going to cost them $20,000 to fix a little area. Why is it fair that I have to pay for them? Everybody uses the street. It ain't like it's just my property or his property. We're all using it, so I don't see why we have to pay all that money. The original one was going to be $50,000 at the end, which was going to raise our taxes double. Nobody's going to want to buy a house where I live. If they can buy a house down the road a couple of miles that the town already owns the streets or roads, and they don't have to pay for that, why are they going to pay double taxes? And we've been paying the full tax like they have right along, so where's that money gone to? We've been paying more taxes than anybody else. That's not fair either. We should have got money back to not have to worry about the roads. There's a lot of questions with this, just like this meeting. I got the notice at 5:00 yesterday. That don't make no sense to be bringing us to a meeting like that. I'm sure there's some people here, but not everybody that should be here. We've got like 80 or 90 people involved.
Well, that'll be why we'll have Mr... They're going to send out another notice, so that's why we'll buy all some time.
Yeah, I think that's what people should think about, though. It's going to raise their taxes. They're going to be harder to sell their house when it ends up because your taxes are going to go up. And we're still responsible now for the next 100 years for that road. So if in five years from now, something else happens, we're going to be responsible to fix it again. Even if they did it for the $50,000, we'd still be responsible. So there's a lot of things people aren't thinking about. They're just thinking of a quick fix, see you later. But, you know, we just traveled, I just traveled Tara Terrace with a few people. In that whole area, there's only one small, a couple of small places that have to be repaired. That whole road is in pretty good shape. Eldridge is the problem. And they're the people that let it go and let it go, but yet they want us now to kick in $10,000 apiece to fix their area. I don't think it's fair.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, go, come on up, sir. Say your name and your...
Hi, Mike Trumel. I'm at 35 Tara Terrace. I have a lot of the same points that you had, sir. I never got a notice.
Me?
Didn't get a notice. My neighbor Kathy across the street, she got somebody else's notice. So I think the planning and the notification on this is pretty poor. You know, this is a big investment for a lot of us. I've been in the neighborhood for like six, seven years now, like two young kids. Something like this financially is detrimental, I think. Another thing is, people already drive way too fast down Tara Terrace. So we're going to fix a road to make people able to drive faster down Tara Terrace? And like he said, my part of the road is fine. I live off of the moral roadside, so I have no potholes in front of my house. And to that point, everybody drives way too fast. I have young children. They can't even play in the street if they want to. If I wanted to put a speed bump in front of my house, I wouldn't expect my neighbors to pay for that. And ultimately, it's just, like you said, parts of the road are fine, parts of the road are not fine. Most of it is on Eldridge Street. I have no reason to really be behind this. I have a pretty large frontage on the street, so what I heard, my estimate was about $15,000. I got to put my house on the market because there's no way I can afford to live there anymore. And, you know, it's just one of those things. Like, I just... I think, you know, we moved into that neighborhood because it wasn't an HOA-type style. It was a working-class neighborhood, and that was a big part of why we moved in, you know, right now. I just don't think it's fair. I think there's a lot to think about when it comes to, you know, what kind of impact it has on individual families.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate your voice. Oh, okay. Come on up. I'll give it a couple more, a couple more here.
I am Dwight Trummell, 49 Tara Terrace. You guys want to get a hold of me? We started this process with Tim February of 2024, and I do have a copy of the petition that we have.
Have you signed it?
It doesn't... You may or may not have signed it, but the petition does exist.
How do you compare it to percentage if you don't sign it?
It was...
Three people right here said they didn't sign it.
Sir, would you please let it finish? I let you up.
Yeah, please. Yeah, no, you can go back and forth. Yeah, sorry. Thanks.
So anyways, we gave this petition to Tim after having a working group meeting. I have minutes for every meeting that we've had since February of 2024 with every deliberative action we've taken. And the petition is right here that we gave to Tim, who certified the linear footage of 53% on cover. And I think 55...
Just address the board, sir. Just to...
On top.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
So anyways, the petition does exist. This was not a phantom midnight meeting where we decided to just, hey, let's fix the roads, and it doesn't matter. If your part's okay, we're going to make you pay. It's just, not everybody has kids in school, but you pay taxes to have great school systems. It's the same thing with your road. It's a safety issue, and everything was done above board. And anyone wants to contact me, I'm Dwight Trummell, 49 Tara Terrace. I'll give you all the minutes. I'll give you all the petitions and every piece of work we've done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Someone in the back? I saw. Yeah, come on up.
Good evening. I want to first thank everybody for their work on this. This came up 10 years ago.
I'm sorry, your name's...
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Norris Brown. I am, I live at 12 Eldridge Street Extension, and I'm also a former boarding school teacher. And the, so this came up 10 years ago. It did not pass at that point because we had included Tar, Colony and Briggs Avenue. So this was, this time, they regrouped, and the street is in very bad repair. And so they just decided, the working group got together and decided we just do Tara Terrace and Eldridge Street. What this does involve, we do have buses going up Eldridge Street on a regular... So you're talking the three school, three routes, and you could... These are good bus routes because you can clock them 2:30 and at 3:30. So we've got buses going through three times a day, so morning and afternoon. We have children up and down these streets, and the people who spoke previously are correct. You know, Eldridge Street is in pretty bad repair compared to Tara Terrace. But it's also, when we're looking at this, the note, the notices did go out. To me, we met at the Larry Travelers Club, and there was a very, a good turnout. I don't know how many people, but I'm estimating at least 50. So it's an important thing for the neighborhood as far as safety is concerned. We have a lot of children in the community and we are on those streets. Also, this betterment, as we are understood, could be spread out on your taxes for 20 years. I know this is a hardship for some people. I know one person it's a hardship for personally. So, but this could be spread out, and it's not going to be the hard hit that people see it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, come on up. I'll take, do one more and then...
Hi, Deborah Duarte, 17 Eldridge Street. I think it's, as you said, this is always going to be a hard decision. And I heard you saying earlier in the discussion, previous discussion, no one's ever, you're never going to have 100% agreement on any decision. The decision has to be what is best in the long run for the majority of people. And we do have a fair majority, but a majority of, you know, households have signed this and said that we want this done. And this is, this is going to be costly, yes. And as we said, it's going to be spread out over 20 years, so that lessens the burden a little bit. And, but, you know, I know I've told my story at these group meetings of how much we have put into our property in trying to fix all the damage that has been caused because of the road issues. And we just cannot afford to go another 10 years having the same discussion, having the same deliberations, and still having potholes. And I just wanted to repeat one story that I heard at one of our Larry Traveler discussions. It's not my story, but someone had mentioned that they need to have an ambulance come to their house for an emergency. They could not, the EMTs and ambulance could not perform, you know, whatever necessary... I don't know exactly what the scenario was, but they could not perform what they needed to do until they got out of our neighborhood because of the potholes. And we all know that that 60 seconds could be life or death. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Okay, hearing one more? All right, one more.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bill Chapman, 78 Tara Terrace. I appreciate your time. I appreciate you taking the night for our, to hear our cause. I've had problems with this issue since the very beginning, some lack of transparency, and I'm not going to point the finger at anybody in particular. But from the very beginning, the establishment of the working group. I didn't even know a working group was being formed and all the meetings that took place and whatnot. But there's a lot of issues that go on with this, and, you know, you got to go back to the very beginning. The roads were not constructed correctly from the very beginning. And the proposal that I'm seeing says to pulverize and rebuild some sections of the road and do a two-inch mill and overlay on other sections of the road. But if, in fact, you drive that neighborhood, you're going to see a cross trench on every single, in front of every single property, whether it be gas, whether it be electric, whether it be telephone, you're going to see a cross trench. whether it be gas, whether it be electric, whether it be telephone, you're gonna see a cross trench of, of, because the trench was not compacted prior, at the time of the construction of the road. Unless you pulverize the entire road and rebuild it, everything, and you do a two-inch mill and you overlay it, you're gonna go through four seasons, one year's time, and you're gonna see those same problems once again. So we've got this proposal of rebuilding part of the road and doing a Band-Aid on the rest of it. So that means that some of the road is gonna be good for another 20 years after this is done, and some of it's gonna have the same imperfections within a year's time after this is done. Okay, so I've never even seen a plan of what's gonna get rebuilt, what's gonna get overlaid. That's a problem. Uh, the lack of notification, I, I, I give Mr. Lyden some credit. He said that the notices went out late, and I thank you for tabling this for further discussion because that, because that's part of transparency that I, that I can appreciate. But I'd like to see the plans as far as what's gonna be done and where it's gonna be done. The other thing that I gotta say is, if we're going by linear foot responsibility, well, the person with 100 feet of linear foot that's gonna get a two-inch mill and overlay, that's gonna have X amount of value to it. However, the person with 100 feet of, of property that's gonna get rebuilt is gonna have a higher value. Why wouldn't a higher percentage of the, of the total cost of this project go to those properties? You know, and then, and then if all else fails, why can't I just mill and pave the road in front of my house? And then, because that's gonna be a whole lot less than what's been proposed by this proposal. And this proposal, like I said, is gonna fail in front of my house in a year's time. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Do you have something? Do you have something?
I just wanted to let everyone know that the petition is published, um, is up on the website with the unpack it for the selectors. You can go and take a look at it.
You can see who signed it. Oh, all right. Um, if we're hearing none, do you have anything else, Mr. Lyden? Thank you, Tim. All right, moving on. Appreciate everyone.
Well, listen, there's two ones.
Oh, there's hands. Oh, sorry, I didn't see those. See, I don't monitor the Zoom. I missed that. Sorry, Tim. Yeah, go ahead. Couple more, um, if you're saying something opposite of your.
I just wanted to, to just happen, uh, briefly, my name's Kate Riddle. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, ma'am. Yes.
Uh, so my name's Kate Riddle, and we live on Briggs Ave. And we just heard about Tara Terrace and Eldridge, and our road is actually really bad as well. And we, I am starting to go to my neighbors to get, to start the process. So I just wanted to let, uh, maybe Tim or anyone else know that we're gonna try to get Briggs Ave and Silver Birch along in this process as well. If, um, that would, um, make it less expensive for everybody in the end if more of the neighborhood was involved.
Um, okay, I think that's sort of a separate discussion tonight. We are, we're on the Tara Terrace discussion. I really don't wanna divert from that, but I'm sure you could reach out to Tim and could she talk to you there?
Yes, I just wanted to say that as well, because there was a comment about the other roads by somebody earlier.
I appreciate that. Okay, thank you. And then I see a, just a K, a hand, and there's a K. I don't, there's no name.
Can you see the name?
There's another name.
I can't see the name from here. The, the other hand that's up, could you? Oh, Moriarty, Moriarty, it says.
Miss Moriarty, Kathy, Kathy Moriarty.
Kathy Moriarty, it says.
She can unmute.
Can you unmute, Mrs. Moriarty?
Are you still there?
Are you still there? All right. Okay, we need, we probably should move on if she can. I don't hear, okay. Apology, again. Okay, all right.
She might be frozen.
Yeah, they'd be frozen. You never know if she's on the other side, so. Just one more, yeah, that, that, one more.
Well, I just wanna give you, my name's Andrew Cooney, Tara Terrace. I appreciate all the comments from everyone, everyone that came. You know, we started this, uh, working group, uh, just some neighbors are just concerned because there's no, there's been no improvement on the roads for a while. We're looking at roads that are 35 years old. Yeah, I don't care if they were built perfectly back then. There's, there's gonna be issues with them, and we need to address it very soon. More, primarily because of the safety issues. The, the Eldridge and Tara, um, intersection was so bad. We thankfully had an option through the DPW for an emergency repair, for, for ambulances and for school buses to get down that road. We thankfully, we followed through as a director, Kathy Witty, um, to, to emergency repair. Otherwise, it was, uh, a foot deep. We have photographs. It was impassable, completely impassable and very dangerous. And, uh, you know, we, we were interested in working. Uh, we have 12 people on, on the committee, working ad hoc, uh, completely grassroots, put together to try to follow the process that the town, uh, thankfully has put together. We have, we had some steps to take, and so we really appreciate that, and we're trying to follow that along. We've, we've, we're well into that now. We've got over 50% approval. So we'd like, we very much appreciate a vote in the positive next week, um, or whenever you wanna reschedule us. And we'll be back. We also do want to take into consideration the concerns that some of the neighbors have, uh, for the discussion, or we have to start this process and move it, move it forward to get these roads repaired, at least a plan to move forward.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. So next we have a fee hearing, um, establish a new $75 application fee for the Conservation Department's administrative review of my, of a minor project. Come on up.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair. Hi, Blackboard.
Hi.
Thanks for having me tonight. This is a, basically a formalization of a process that the Conservation Commission has, has been doing for many years. My predecessors before me administrated a purple. Uh, it's pretty commonplace. Most towns in Massachusetts do it. It's basically any real small scope project that falls within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, yet it's small enough that it's really not worth a full application, presentation before CONCOM, a letter notification, et cetera. So this would just formalize the process, give me an application, um, to review, a name, a contact. It would provide us a permit, a six-month window to get the work done. Overall, it's just gonna be great. It's gonna create a paper trail. I'm really excited to finally get this done. I've met with the Town of Sandwich, spoken at the Town of Falmouth, kind of mirrored what they've already been doing and found what works well in their town, and mirrored that, um, on the application. The CONCOM discussed and voted on this in the November 6th meeting. They decided on a $75 application fee. I do have a list of all the fees, or most of the fees in Barnstable County, and 75 falls in the middle. It, uh, matches Falmouth and Sandwich, actually. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, let me go around. MJ, anyone on, uh, on Zoom land have any questions for Stephanie?
I'm fine with the fee.
Yeah, I'm good. Everyone else?
I'm too uncomfortable with it, and I understand that the reasoning behind it is certainly valid when you're doing this, just these administrative reviews instead of this.
Exactly.
Long drawn out process and.
Agendas for the bigger projects that we need the commissions in, but this just.
That requires more deliberations, right? It's similar to how we, uh, the, uh, what was it? The capital spending from 10,000 to 25,000, kind of, you know? Instead of having go-to-town meeting and writing articles and like, these are things that, you know, are needed immediately. Or, you know, at this point, some of it hinders the process, right?
Absolutely. I'd rather have people come to us and make it smoother and give me a little bit of oversight. I can make recommendations. Um, and if there's ever a project that seems kind of vague or I'm not comfortable with, I will bring it to the commission. So that's always an option. There's a denial box here to check.
Do we have a motion? Do we need a motion for this?
So, motion to, uh, establish a new $75 application fee for the Conservation Department's administrative view of minor projects.
Oh, MJ. Yeah, that's an old one. She just didn't put it down. But that's the woman from before.
Yeah, that's the.
So we have a, uh, motion from Anne Marie and a second by MJ. Jean did it, but MJ was louder, so I'll give that back. And, uh, uh, do we have any further discussion? All right, I'll do roll call vote because, uh, we have folks online. I do that anyway. MJ.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Anne Marie.
Yes.
Melissa, yes. 5, 0, 0. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. All right, moving on. Number eight, we have a discussion and possible vote regarding the request for access for 88 Sagamore Road. We have. All right, where's that? There you are.
No.
Sorry, I didn't say that. I just called him to. I get them confused. I didn't mean that.
It's the beard.
It's the beard. Yeah, you threw me off with the beard tonight. It's been a long week, and it's only Tuesday.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Robert DeWar here with Bracket Engineering. I'm joined with Don Perry of the PST Group. Uh, we're here on behalf of Mark Puccio. He is the owner of 88 Sagamore Road and the applicant tonight. He is in the process of finalizing his permitting for the construction of a stone revetment in front of his house on, on the coastal bank that, um, abouts the Sagamore Beach area. Due to the nature of the bank and the neighborhood, uh, that neighborhood is very tight, as I'm sure many of you are aware. Uh, access to the bank, uh, has proven to be difficult. So we are here tonight to request, uh, permission to access the bank from the Sagamore Beach lot, uh, access lot, um, and across, uh, the town-owned beach that's known as a 280 Standish Road. Just for reference here, this is just a plan for the revetment. We'd be coming in from the south. And a little more of a bird's eye view of the whole area. Uh, this is the Sagamore Road, the junction. He's right at the corner of Sagamore Road and Fisher Lane. Um, the access ramp is about 650 feet south, um, and so they'd be traversing across the beach, up to the property itself to build the stone revetment. Don can speak to some more of the means and methods, uh, if required, but the, he has a lot, uh, that's right up on State Road in Sagamore Beach. So the staging of it is largely going to be at his lot, uh, transferring stones as required, machinery as required down the ramp and across the beach. With that, um, we don't, we don't have too many questions from the board.
All right, I guess I'll go around. MJ, uh, Peter, start up there.
I don't have any questions.
No, okay.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, Jean?
Yeah, I, well, what type of equipment is gonna be driving along the beach? I have a concern about erosion. I mean, what, I mean, how heavy, I mean, what are we disrupting? I have, I'm a little concerned about heavy equipment driving down the beach. I mean, does even the DNR, I mean, do they have an opinion on, on this, uh, this access? Or, or they, do they have concerns about it?
Hi, my name is.
I, it's, it's, it's a, it's a tough spot. I get why you need the access, but I, I do have a concern with, with the environment and the, uh.
Right. My name's Donald Perry. I'm with the LSC Group, and we would be able to be doing the construction. I did, actually, I did bring, uh, just a brief handout here. We, um, as far as the equipment, we will be using, uh, smaller equipment than we typically use. We have done it over 20 projects in the town of Born over the past 12 years. Have used that, uh, accessway a number of times, as well as the bottom of, um, uh, Robinson Road, where it intersects, I believe that's with Standish Road, uh, have used that as well. Most recently, we, uh, for the, uh, DPW, we had removed a sailboat that was abandoned there last year. That's actually larger equipment that we traversed across the beach than we'll be using for this project. We had also removed the whale that was, um, on the beach the year prior to that. And we've done 20-plus stone revetments and, and coastal dune work. Definitely will take care of, of, um, we're very conscientious of the environment of any type of coastal bank stabilization. Uh, there, there won't be any disruption to the coastal bank. We'll, we'll use, um, we use heavy mats to come in and, uh, access our way onto the beach. This particular accessway, uh, we're gonna use smaller equipment than we typically use. Uh, we do have, uh, a retail yard on Route 3A, so we're not going to, as we've done in the past, and a lot of the projects that have happened in the past, we'll stockpile material at the actual landing. That will not be the process that we use. We'll, uh, our project, uh, foreman on a daily basis will request what the materials are and time it throughout the day as it comes in. So it's, it's really the minimal interruption to the neighborhood, to the, to the beach, and it will be a, a very minimal impact. Fully, uh, restore any disturbance. We'll do a walkthrough with, with the Conservation Commission, with any of the town officials that, uh, you know, that, that would be involved pre, pre-job construction and, uh, pretty much open book right through the whole project.
And how about, uh, safety oversight? How does that? Because you're gonna, you'll be on town property and given in light of the, the recent cranberry bog incident.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. And we have a, we have a safety program within our company. We have a, a safety officer. We did, I did, um, just, uh, in that small package that, that I wanted to bring along tonight, I did have our insurance company, which we've done in the past, named, named the town insurer. And, um, uh, we have a, uh, our coverage is $2 million with a $5 million, $5 million umbrella. You know, we, we put, set up spill kits on the site. We're, we're very in tune with all of that. Daily job reports come into our office every day. So that's, that's, you know, those concerns are paramount to us.
All right, do we have a, do we have a motion for this from someone?
Madam Chair?
Yes, do you have?
So we do have an access agreement.
Okay.
License that we've used in the past.
Okay.
So if the board does wanna proceed with this, I would ask that you authorize me to work with town council to draft up that license agreement and share with the representative.
All right, wanna make the motion? Someone might wanna make that motion for us?
Make the motion to authorize, um, Marlene to speak with town council about, um, the.
Access agreement license.
License for this project.
So we have a motion from Jean. Do we have a second? Second?
I'll say, oh.
Okay, second from Anne Marie. Any further discussion?
Have we heard, uh, what's CONCOM's opinion of this? Is, uh, Stevie still in the room?
She is.
Yep. Don, uh, Stevie Fitch, Conservation Agent. We have issued an order of conditions. I have been onsite and met with DPW Director and Bracket Engineering and discussed the route. This, you know, 88 Sagamore has a permit to build a revetment. This is the best way to access their property. We've walked the beach. There is some beach grass. I'm not very concerned about that. If there is any damage, we can discuss it after the fact and do some replanting. Like Don said before, he's done work on our beaches with the sailboat and the whale. There was no damage during that work. So, um, CONCOM is comfortable, and it's all covered under the order of conditions at 88 Sagamore. And that order of conditions has a special condition referencing the need for a license of the town.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion from Jean, a second from Anne Marie. Further discussion, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, number nine. Is a policy introduction. It's revision. Is a policy introduction. It's revisions drafted by DNR and the Shore and Harbor Committee. We have A, should I do these one by one, or I'll, I'll say them off and then you can do them in order as they're said? So we have A is the shellfish regulations, recreational and commercial. B is the waterways regulations, and C is the marinas regulations. So I'll give you the floor.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Slight Board members. Hannah Lawrence, DNR Director. So the first item is our proposed shellfish regulations. I'll go through the revisions that were drafted on the recreational regulations first.
If I could just say real quick, I do wanna say too that tonight we are not voting. This is just our, our initial-
First look.
First, first look.
Not even first.
It's not even our first reading today. It's just hearing what Hannah's been working on, and then we've got a long way to go before any vote will be taken, just for the record. Okay, go ahead, Hannah. Thank you.
So first, just some general revisions that, you know, include changes to the years to reflect 2026, you know, such as, you know, when the meetings were held. So the first proposed change in the regulation is section one point eight, and it is in regards to the removal of beach grass. So this regulation would include sea grasses. So with, moving forward, read removal of beach marsh sea grass or peat banks. Removal of any grasses, including eelgrass and other protected bottom vegetation, or peat for the purposes of harvesting shellfish shall be prohibited. And then the next proposed change is in one point nine, and it is in regards to just the dates as far as daylight savings time and allowable shellfishing hours. I believe for the regulations, that is the, the proposed changes that we have. Otherwise, it's just, you know, some general housekeeping changes to, you know, changes in the board, as well as, again, applicable dates.
Got those. All right, thank you. So that was the shellfish regulations. Does the Slight Board have any questions or comments on that?
That's recreation.
Recreation, sorry. Sorry.
Recreation and commercial.
Yeah, yeah.
Commercials.
Recreation and commercials, yeah, yeah, okay. My brain's in slow today. All right, next.
So for the commercial regulations, they're essentially the, the general regulations are the same as what they are in recreational. So again, just changes as far as the dates that are in the regulations. And again, one point eight updating that regulation to read the removal of beach marsh sea grass or peat banks. So the removal of any grasses, the addition is including eelgrass and other protected bottom vegetation, or peat for the purposes of harvesting shellfish shall be prohibited.
See that? Okay.
Again, with an update to the dates in regard to daylight savings time for harvesting hours. And those are the changes that were proposed in the commercial regs. Nothing, you know, further than what had been proposed in the recreational. Again, just the updates as far as changes to reflect, you know, the, the select board, as well as any of the dates that were previously from other years.
I see those. Yeah, thank you. All right.
Do you wanna, do you wanna talk about that one?
Well, yeah, I wasn't sure if we should do them both and then talk about the, but yeah, we're on waterways regulations. So does MJ or Peter have any thoughts on those? I mean, it was just really one edit that was, was kind of mimicked the shellfish regulations regarding the eelgrass? I mean, yeah, the beach grass.
Yes, the, the commercial and recreational shellfish regulations. Essentially, it was a change to both of them that mirror each other.
Yeah. No comments?
I have no comments on the, the shellfish regulations. I think they're fine. They're pretty, you know, those are, we can probably approve those because they're, you know, done. I don't, I'm not like major changes, so.
Well, I think we're, the, the point is to listen tonight, right? We weren't approving or voting anything this evening, correct?
So I do think it is important, if there are ones that the board doesn't want to do the full three hearings, the full three readings, to let us know. Because definitely with the shellfish regulations, we will, we will wanna have those printed and available with the licenses. So if, if they're, if everybody is okay, you can indicate that, and we'll bring that one back sooner.
Okay, okay. Perfect. So we won't be voting tonight, but we can bring them back sooner if they're, we're confident there's not too many edits to that, so that was pretty easy. All right. So we're moving on to the marinas regulations.
Waterways. Waterways.
Well, I'm sorry, waterways regulations. Sorry. Any other comments? Same thing, MJ? You'd like to?
On the waterways regulations?
Well, we haven't reviewed them.
Yeah, no, I'm done on the shellfish.
Okay, good. All right, let's move up.
Okay. So for the waterways regulations, similar to the shellfish regs, you know, just some updates as far as dates, so, you know, pretty standard in that regard. Some updates to the table of contents at the beginning to add a section two point fifteen of Sagamore mooring fields, five point O to reflect mooring inspectors, and thirteen rafting of vessels. So the first proposed revision is section two point two point two in regard to new and renewal permits. So this would include verbiage for any mooring offers that are made outside of our normal fall offer. So it would read, "The following must be submitted to the harbor master annually between January first and July first." So to include new offers made in the spring may be subject to alternate deadlines outlined on the paperwork provided by the DNR. Another comment as far as this regulation would be to have something put into the regs either effective, you know, in 2027 or 2028, changing the deadline for paperwork to be turned in no later than April first, with no renewals accepted after May first, as we allow them to be turned in up to July. A lot of folks wait till the last minute and really set us back as far as getting everything processed, you know, when, when they're waiting till, until the very last minute to do it. So that proposal, pulling it back a little bit, would give us some, some more time when it's a little quieter to get, you know, the bulk of the permitting done, rather than just pushing into the summer when it is our, our busy season. So that's our first proposed change. In that same section on page five, the proposed would be to increase the late fee from twenty-five dollars to a hundred dollars to hopefully deter folks from waiting until the very last minute and just paying twenty-five dollars to renew late. So it would read, "Documentation received after July first will be subject to a one hundred dollar late fee. No renewals be accepted after August first. Failure to provide necessary documentation and pay the late fee by August first will result in the revocation of the mooring permit." Section two point two point three, this is in regards to boats out of the water for more than a full season. This would include an addition of mooring gear, parentheses tackle, must remain in place marked by a mooring buoy or winter stick September through May only, or the mooring location shall be considered abandoned, with more in section two point eleven. In two point three, it's in regard to the, the mooring fees. So presently, our recreational mooring permit is a hundred dollars, and our commercial mooring permit is two hundred. We propose to increase that a hundred and fifty dollars for the recreational mooring permit and three hundred dollars for the commercial mooring permit, which would be effective for the 2027 season. I do have a comparison of some of the other towns that I can share with you all as far as what they charge for their mooring fees. They are kind of all over the place as far as what other towns do, but I do have that available, but I'd be more than happy to share. So the next update in two point four is in regard to the annual sticker attachment. So float sticker adjacent to the unique permit number assigned to the float by the harbor master. This is applicable to both chapter ninety-one and swim floats. We really don't have chapter ninety-ones listed in our regulations, so we're just trying to kind of bridge that gap as we do permit the floats for those structures. Two point seven changes. So this proposal is a increase of the change fee, which is presently fifteen dollars, to a twenty-five dollar change fee. So this encompasses boat changes, so if anyone is looking to upgrade their boat or, you know, needs to make any significant moves to their moorings, depending on, you know, what might be going on in the cove, that takes a lot of work to process and do some research as far as, is it going to be feasible? In this regulation, the very last bullet point, just a change in wording. So permits may be canceled, crossed out, and the wording changed to suspended by the harbor master if space for the new vessel is not available. So essentially putting the permit on hold versus canceling it altogether if a proposed change can't be accommodated during that particular season. For the waitlist in two point eight, in mooring areas where no additional mooring spaces are available, applicants must complete a mooring waitlist application and pay a non-refundable administrative fee of twenty-five dollars per mooring application. The applicant shall be placed on a waitlist maintained by the harbor master with mooring outfalls and chapter ninety-one float permits maintained separately, so that is being proposed to be included as, again, our regulations really didn't speak to chapter ninety-one floats previously.
All right, thank you.
In two point eight point three for alternate location, again, this just deals with the waitlist, but at the very last sentence, just the addition of the word be between shall and placed to be included in that. So as far as waitlist procedures in two point eight point four, the bulk of that would remain the same, but we would look to change the offers that are available at the end of every month to at the discretion of the harbor master. You know, that's not saying they can't be available at the end of every month, but just gives us a little bit more flexibility if, you know, we need to scale it back a little bit or, you know, we have more available that we can, we can offer to folks. Okay, so the next proposed change is in two point nine point one in regard to the required minimum standard as far as the, the mooring gear that folks install. So the scope of moorings shall be at least twice the vertical height above the sea bottom at mean high water. Maximum length of chain or line shall be no more than two times the minimum length above the prescribed four times total, except where the harbor master determines otherwise. Spring-loaded safety hooks, also known as screw-locking latch carabiners, may only be used as a means to secure a backup pennant to the bowline and shall be certified with a safe working load equal to or greater than that of the pennant. All chain shackles, swivels, and associated hardware shall be of United States manufacturer. Foreign manufactured chains and hardware is not permitted, nope, the safe working load is not less than one-third the rated weight capacity. So that addition was just in regard to those types of hooks. Under this section as well, we're proposing to add an option for eco-moring systems. So that would fall into the, the, you know, the minimum standards chart and with a note that in lieu of traditional chain moorings, an elastic environmental mooring system may be permitted by the harbor master using the guidelines of the manufacturer specifications. Any area identified to have eelgrass will be required to use an environmentally friendly mooring system to preserve the eelgrass and other protected bottom vegetation. So kind of piggybacking off of the eco-moring, so two point nine point four would be in addition. So read eco-mourings effective January one, 2027. Any new or replacement moorings within an area determined to have eelgrass and/or is acknowledged by the most current eelgrass surveys conducted by the Mass Department of Environmental Protection or the United States Army Corps of Engineers will be required to install an environmentally friendly mooring system. This practice will reduce chain drag and minimize bottom disruptions to allow healthy growth of eelgrass. Two point eleven, excuse me, in winter sticks. So at the end of the existing regulation, proposing to include a little bit more as far as abandonment. So it shall be prima facie evidence that a mooring is unused, neglected, or considered abandoned if the permit holder fails to remove the winter stick for the summer boating season, which is May sixteenth to September fourteenth. In such cases, the harbor master may revoke the mooring permit. A no-bolt status must be requested on the annual renewal contract and approved by the harbor master if a boat will not be placed on the mooring for that season. Which is already our policy, but just reiterating to folks that they can't just use a winter stick and not have their mooring installed. Excuse me. Two point fourteen, voluntary surrender of a mooring. Written notification must be submitted to the harbor master, and all associated mooring tackle must be removed from waterways at the owner's expense within thirty days. This is an addition. In the event of the death of the mooring owner, where there is no surviving spouse and the mooring or mooring outhaul cannot be transferred, the burden of removal of the mooring tackle falls to the estate. Two point fifteen, this is a new regulation proposed, the Sagamore, just to have it in writing. The Sagamore Beach mooring fields, after careful consideration and the best interest of the coastal ecology and boating safety, the harbor master has closed the waitlist for the Sagamore Beach mooring field. Existing mooring permit holders in the mooring field may continue to renew their mooring permits. However, all requests for revoke change exceeding thirty feet shall be denied. This mooring field will be discontinued by attrition. As existing permits are voluntarily surrendered or revoked, they will not be replaced. Section five, this is a new addition in regard to mooring inspectors. So mooring inspectors will abide by all federal, state, and local laws, rules, regulations, conditions, and lawful orders of the harbor master. Five point one, mooring inspector list. The harbor master will maintain a list of approved mooring inspectors. A mooring inspector will demonstrate to the harbor master knowledge of the town of Born, waterways, rules, and regulations. Applications to become a mooring inspector may be obtained from the harbor master. Five point two, inspection reports. The mooring inspector will assume all liability and responsibility for the mooring inspection report and certify that all work performed meets the requirements listed within the town of Born waterways rules and regulations. Mooring inspectors failing to submit new installation and inspection reports by their respective deadlines may be subject to twenty-five dollar late fee per report. Repeated tardy reports may be cause for suspension or revocation of mooring inspector status at the discretion of the harbor master. Five point three, mooring inspector guidelines. Mooring inspectors will be provided a copy of the town of Born mooring inspector guidelines prepared by the Department of Natural Resources and will be responsible for complying with the guidelines. So following that are just some number changes to reflect what was changed earlier in the document. Under section eleven, dinghies and kayaks, just changing owners to owners with an apostrophe S. Thirteen, rafting of vessels, the rafting of a vessel alongside another vessel or vessels on a mooring, whether permitted for that mooring or not, is prohibited. Rafting of vessels at anchor may be allowed by the harbor master, whether permitting, based upon size of vessels and tackle. In the event of inclement weather, the harbor master or designated may order vessels rafted to another anchored vessel to separate and get underway to a safer location. Okay, so then the next updates were in regard to the definitions. So the first update was dock. So a structure extending seaward of mean high water or seaward of salt marsh into a body of water. The addition is which is duly licensed by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Mass D E P. And removes to which boats may be moored to, yes, to which boats may be moored. The next change is to float, which previously read a seasonal floating dock uses a swimming platform installed temporarily. It would say all seasonal April 1 to November 1 floating docks attached to the end of a chapter 91 dock, which is managed by the Department of Natural Resources and requires a certificate of compliance for permitting. A new definition of forfeiture. So this shall mean a permit holder's disregard or violation of mooring regulations is cause for the permit holder to lose their mooring privileges and the harbor master may revoke the mooring permit. The next was a definition for kayak. A light narrow boat that has both ends tapered to a point is propelled by a double-bladed paddle and often has a closed top, except for an opening in which the paddler sits with the legs extended straight out in front. The next change is for a mooring permit. So written authority issued by the harbor master for a permanent temporary, so seasonal. Oh, excuse me, that's, that will stay in there. So the addition is seasonal location. I think it was just a double print on our end. So that was for a mooring permit. Next is including a definition for rafting. So the act of securing a vessel or vessels alongside another vessel that is secured on a mooring or anchored. And definition of swim float. Is a seasonal floating dock uses a swimming platform installed temporarily. And then the definition of water skiing shall include the use of water ski surfboards. Inflatable tow devices has been added and the towing or manipulation of surfboard or other towed devices behind the vessel. And then again, the other updates are just in regard to, you know, general housekeeping as far as changes in the board.
Thank you. So I think I'll start with the select board and go around. MJ, Peter, anyone?
I have a couple of things. I think most of these changes to the waterways regulations are very good. I think you've done a good job clarifying a lot of things and that's good. I did have a question about 2.2.2, where it says the permits till July 1st and then we're thinking about changing it next year to be April 1st with no renewals after May 1st. I, I think that wording has to... I think the wording in whatever regulations we do should be really consistent about best practice. So I, and I totally agree with you that like sort of allowing renewals through like August 1st is, it just makes the summer too difficult for the, for the cove masters.
Yes.
So I mean, I think that makes sense. I think there has to be a balance, but I think the, I think the date should be in there and in the document and not sort of or in some other document that the DNR might give you. I think it should be, the regulations should be, give good notice in one place on what the dates are. And I think May 1st might be a little late for that because sometimes people don't think about things till like June or something. But yeah. So I'm not, I'm not sure I have any answer for that, but I think that should be very clear. That, that section. And then the follow-up about when the renewals are, when the cutoff date, that should be, that should be very clear. And so if you're coming back with a final document, that should be really worded well.
Yeah, so currently the regulations in 2.2, they're kind of broken up a little bit as far as what the deadlines are. But in like the second half for renewals, it, you know, it does give that cutoff of August 1st. But that's certainly something that we can, you know, make sure to include what this proposed new deadlines would be.
Yeah, it was kind of a question in your notes. So I was like, well, I'm not, it wasn't clear to me. And then I went to look at like where, where does it say other things and I couldn't find anything. So I, I just think the regulations should be clear about what the dates are and then they should be reasonable for people. You know, sometimes people don't think about summer until it's like June. And then I had a question on the 2.8. And I, I agree with this change where it wouldn't be monthly offers. I think that's way too much. It gets way too complicated. But, but I think there should be, if, and I like the idea of like offers twice a year. That was in the notation. But I think that, and then if it's gonna be, it should say like twice a year and then maybe or at the discretion of the harbor master. But I think there should be, there should be a definite time when offering is going to be made to give notice to people that if they're going to get an offer, it's going to be in May and maybe July or something. But to set out those dates and there's an expectation about when it could happen. And then at the description.
Okay.
And a, a lot of that just comes from my experience being the spouse of a cove master. And I had a question about the Sagamore list, waitlist. Is there anyone on that waitlist now that's never going to get the, the mooring that they were on the waitlist for?
No, so we had, just because of the nature of Sagamore Beach, we had closed that waitlist last summer. So no one was able to get onto that list. So, you know, as we had openings available, we were able to clear the folks that were on the waitlist, got them their new moorings and obviously not accept new waitlist applications for Sagamore Beach.
I think there were like a couple of people that were on the list that had been waiting for a while, so yeah. That sounds like a good plan. I like that plan.
Yes, they were offering moorings.
Those are my only things clarified, 2.2.2 and 2.8, I think would make these regulations great. So thank you.
All right. Any comments from the rest of the select board first? The public, come on up to the mic, sure.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Silverbrand. I am a shellfisherman in town. I'm also a buttermilk bay oyster company. I've been shellfishing in this town for 36 years, about to be 37. I've seen five directors, countless patrol officers come and go. This whole eelgrass thing, I was informed, there's been no information at all. I found out about what's going on here at the Shore and Harbor Committee through somebody else that was here for something else in October. I had spoken to the director back in May after being approached by one of the DNR officers telling me that they were going to hand out tickets for fishing in the eelgrass, which didn't, there's no rules. There's nothing in the rules, which has been changed obviously, or is trying to be changed. The director has never, has asked her to keep me in the loop. She's never even given me an email, phone call since that day. I have, I hear the term fairness and equity. There's no fairness, there's no equity. This is how I make my living. You're, you're making a decision that affects the money I make in what I do for a living. The Shellfish Sanitation Act by the FDA, because of all the mooring fields in the Town of Born, we are not allowed to fish during April through November in those areas. So that means the other side of the town, most of it is closed to us. With that being said, the few areas that are open, there's not a lot of shellfish there. So we are stuck on this side of the bridge, fishing in areas with eelgrass. Now, like I said, I've been fishing 36 years in the eelgrass. Not only all the time, but where this area where I'm talking about, Old Biaguan Point, there's one angry guy or two angry guys over there that have been complaining. The DNR told me there's a lot of complaints about it. The complaints are aimed at me, which is fine. They, I've been dealing with this for 36 years. People don't want to see us out there. I understand that. I had to file a Freedom and Information Act because of the lack of information coming out of the DNR. That Freedom and Information Act turns up, no complaints. How is that possible? How is that possible? What I'm told is all these complaints. First by the guy that approached me down on the beach and then by the DNR when I went in and talked to him. I brought up to Director Lawrence that maybe we should put some markers out. Let me go out there and rake it clean and see what happens. Because in my 36 years of fishing, I fish in those areas, then we move on to a new area. When I come back in the summer, the following summer, those places are, the eelgrass is thicker than it was when I left. I don't understand. It's like rotting till in a garden. I'm not a scientist, but I've been doing this my whole life. If they were just killing the eelgrass and destroying it and all, there wouldn't be any anymore. It'd be all gone by now. Zero. As a matter of fact, I've been in touch with DMF, Marine Fisheries. They say that the eelgrass on Cape Guard Canal is the strongest in the whole entire state. You know, I, I had mentioned that I would seek legal action if they weren't going to do something about, you know, they're not going to just take the shellfishermen out of the picture. What about the residential and the moorings? So here we go, you're addressing residential and moorings. But there's a whole host of other issues that I didn't bring up there that's not being addressed. So what you're doing is you're taking us out of the way, but you're not addressing all these other issues. The mooring field won't think alone. You're putting off of 2027. There's no fair and equity here at all. There's no transparency either. I, I don't understand what's going on, but something's going on and it's not right. And I have no confidence, this isn't a personal attack on Hannah. I have no confidence right now, though, in the DNR. I am the biggest player out there as far as shellfishing. We clean 25 million gallons a day in my grant. And over the 36 years, I probably could have filled this building right to the top with the trash that I pick up out there. I think we need to have a lot more discussion. I'm asking you put this off till when the mooring thing happens in 27. And I think we should also do our own study, which is what I was told was going to happen. And it hasn't happened. We should put the mooring balls out there, a 20 by 50 spot, rake it, and see what happens in a year and a half. I guarantee it won't even take a year and a half. When you come back the next summer, it'll be all filled in. Because over where I was fishing, I fished from the rock pile at the end of the old canal in Aguan Point, all the way down that stretch. And it's not all eelgrass there. But where I did fish in the eelgrass, for the last three years I've been over there, this past year I did not fish there because they, they said they were going to do this and I said, I'll move out of there, try and keep things quiet. It's all grassed in. You can't even tell I was there. So I think we need to do a little more study because you're going to affect the way I make my living. And, and if you're going to do it to us, you're going to, you're going to have to address all these issues. Not just the guys, the residential people and the moorings and the, and the commercial guys. What about lawn fertilizer? That does more damage than, than the moorings and all the other things. What about the maritime pumping septic into the canal? Even though it's treated, it's still fresh water and it's still got some stuff in it. Some stuff that doesn't come out of it. There's just a whole host of things, so I'm going to definitely be addressing the selectmen for a meeting with a lot of players involved. We need to sit down and talk about this in a fair and equitable way. Because right now, if you do this the way you're going to do it, you're going to violate our civil rights. There aren't many shellfishermen and I understand we're the easiest ones to pick on. But at this point, at the rate you're going, I'll have to shellfish in the parking lot to those point. And there's no shellfish there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'll just kind of just, just say, you know, I want to be sure that we're doing this right as well. I also come from a family of shellfishermen. You know, we're native people and our people fish and they hunt and they forage. And it's very important that we're not creating something that is going to harm people's livelihoods if it's not absolutely necessary. So that's my thought on that. I just wanted to add that. I have more to look at. I have more to learn. I have some research to do. And this is thankfully just the first sort of look at this. We're not, it's not even the first reading thankfully, so we've got some time to do these things. So we appreciate you coming in and speaking on that.
Sure, I also have some letters of support from conservation as well as from DMF. Not just like a letter of support, but just a letter in regard to eelgrass inquiry for you folks.
Perfect.
All right, any other comments or questions regarding the waterway regulations? All right, I thank Hannah for the presentation on that and the document. And thank you, Mr. Silverbrand. And if not, I guess we can move on to the marinas regulation next. Thank you.
All right, good evening.
Hi.
I am Emily Bakayaki. I'm the Marina Manager for the Town of Born. So I will take over and read these proposed changes for our regulations. Our current regulations that we give to our voters are from 2004. So I was in like the fifth grade in 2004. So I think we should really update these pretty good. So, yeah, 2004. So the first, right in the center is just the title change, just to make it a little more clear. We do manage the three town marinas, so just to kind of clarify that we are the Town of Born, we're the Natural Resources, and we're the marinas, all in one umbrella. We're going to rename it hopefully to the Born Department of Natural Resources, Town of Born Marinas Rules and Regulations, Terms and Conditions. All right. And 1.1, we would like to change the word tenant to leasing. It's just more of a contractual word that would make it easier to put an umbrella over all of our tenants. And piggybacking on that, in 1.2, we'd like to change the word town to lessor. So you'll see that in a whole slew of our, of our regulations. We would like to remove 1.3, excuse me, renumber, but remove the words from the original 1.3, which used to read the word domicile in quotations as used here on shall mean the occupancy of a boat or a vessel moored at the marina between the hours of 12 midnight and 6 a.m. for habitation, sleeping, or housekeeping purposes. So we'd like to completely remove that from our regulations and renumber 1.4, which was previously 1.4 to 1.3. The next one is in section 3. We would like to just reclassify the maximum vessel lengths. We're actually already observing these. Again, 2004 boats were different. Boats are very different now. 2025, they're going to be different next year when people come in and see them 2026. So we would like to change or keep, Kukasa River was already at 30 feet. Excuse me, we'd like to change it, roll it back from 36 feet to 30 feet. Monument Beach will stay at 40. Taylor's Point will be moved from 45 to 50. So those are all feasible lengths that we can fit in those marinas. So we'd like to change those. Let's see. Again, the leasing and the lessor is something that we'd like to change throughout the whole document. 3.1 mentions that boats could either be registered or have a U.S. Coast Guard documentation. So that's just a clarification. Boats can be documented or registered depending on their user or owner's discretion. Some grammatical changes here. Again, something you'll see throughout the document is something where a lot of the regulations just state him. So we have changed them to him slash her. Let the ladies own some boats. Let's see. We're going to add in 3.2, hopefully leases are not permitted to sublease slips or moorings if they do not own a substitute boat. So basically that just means if Partier sells their boat in the middle of the season, they're contracted to the slip, they cannot tell a friend of Partier that they can use their slip without a cost or whatever. That right goes back to the town and marina management. You know, we can sublease to a transient, someone visiting our town for the summer or another boat that's maybe on the waiting list that could use that slip in the time being. If Partier was to purchase another boat, they could absolutely use their slip that they have already paid for and signed a contract for. Down to number four, again, he and her, we'd like to change the marina, or excuse me, marine... Down to number four, again, he, he and her, uh, would like to change the marina, uh, or excuse me, marine. Insurance policy, uh, which used to require boat owners to have a minimum amount of three hundred thousand per occurrence. We would like to change that to one hundred thousand per occurrence, uh, excuse me, one million. Uh, we'd like to add that, uh, change that to one. So that would read protection and indemnity, PNI insurance, and a minimum amount of one million dollars per occurrence, including pollution insurance and hull protection and the amount of the boat. And then, we'd like to add on to the bottom of that statement, just go into a little more depth on why these folks have this insurance, so we'd add the whole paragraph, which includes. The leasing agrees to release and discharge lessor from any and all responsibility or liability for injury, including death, loss, or damage to persons or property in connection with the lessor's use of docking facility or marina. This release and discharge shall cover without limitation or any loss or damage resulting from lessor's employees, handling of boats, vandalism, fire, theft. Higher, low water, winds, collision, ice, rain, loss of electrical power, flooding, or sinking, or any other act of God. So basically, anything that can happen to a boat out on the high sea, uh, you need to be covered. Because anything and everything can happen on a boat, just like anything and everything can happen on the road or wherever. Uh, section five, just a rewording, any boat entering a Town of Born Marina shall be berthed only where directed. Uh, so basically that just kind of prohibits people from just wandering in, they want to tie their boat up and go visit Mahoney's, and. It turns up their boat is there for two weeks, and Taylor Point is on the, the hook for that. Um, so basically every boat is just where they're told and no other place. Um, uh, some more kind of grammatical things, but we would change tenant to leasing, uh, his and her. Um, the person staying on the boat for more than twenty-four hours shall notify the marina manager, uh, basically to. Notify not just someone walking by that works two days a week with the word staff on their back, um, hopefully they would, you know, now they'll have to notify the person in charge. We would like to also exclude the last sentence, which stated, if a tenant unexpectedly leaves his slip. Or mooring for twenty-four hours or more, he must make every effort to notify the marina as soon as possible, both for safety concerns and transient purposes. Alright, uh, some more grammatical, we added in section eight, uh, the word open flames. Basically, you know, if someone wants to bring their solar stove down to the back of their boat, we would hope they would not do that, um, but just to state that. Um, let's see, let's move down to section ten, we added, uh, towards the end of that, uh, the lessor reserves the right to terminate or revoke dockage slash mooring. Either seasonal or transient, shall the vessel condition be of any concern or question, all boats must be kept in a seaworthy condition. Both mechanically, structurally, and visually, in the opinion of the lessor, and must be capable of leaving the marina basin and or dock under their own power. So basically, just to keep the derelict boats out of there, um, you know, people pay the town money, we pay mon, you know, we spend our time and efforts to make the marina look nice. Um, also, we can't be having abandoned boats, or, you know, boats that aren't under their own power, not meaning a sailboat, meaning a boat without engines, or whatever.
Jumpyard.
See, yeah, we do, we do not want to be the Taylor Point jumpyard, we'd like to be the nice Taylor Point Marina, so, and Monument Beach Marina, and Picasa River Marina, so. Um, yes, we'll add that, hopefully, uh, we would like to add to number eleven. Quiet hours at all marinas shall be ten PM to seven AM. Uh, we have a lot of people who, you know, come in and out, it's very frequent for people to show up at three AM and start a fishing trip with their buddies, so we just want to remember that. The other, for Taylor Point, a hundred and forty-five people, and, you know, so be it the other marinas, that they're also using the marina for whatever purposes they'd like to. Um, so just to keep it quiet, uh, during those respective times. Um, some more grammatical, lessor, lessy. Uh, thirteen, we'd like to add gangways, so leasing shall not hang laundry from boats docks, gangways, or finger piers, so. Someone obviously hung something from a gangway, so we got to add it. Grammar in number fifteen, uh, and then we'll, yeah, a sentence, uh, to the end of fifteen, which states. In the event of a severe storm, please refer to the Town of Born Marina Hurricane Plan. Which is accessible at the marina office, on the town website, or by request. Um, so this is something that most, even the private marinas of the town, um, they do have, this is a document that we could potentially spruce up as well, but it is something that we have in place. Um, it basically would tell a boat owner, you know, under our discretion if Hurricane Emily was coming in, and I needed to move my boat off the premises because it would cause damage. To the facility, um, to hopefully turn to that document. Uh, again, we changed the word domicile because we, um, would like to strike that from our definitions, um, using your boat for overnight stays. Um, so again, this, this whole section and the next few kind of deal with. Shoreside facilities, so this is something we deal with, the Town of Born is in the Clean Water Act, we use our pumpout facilities, shoreside, the boats that we run during the summer, um, so this really comes into play with all of our, uh, marina. Uh, customers, um, we obviously offer facilities to those customers, Taylor Point has a twenty-four hour access to the facilities. Monument Beach, the same thing, Picasa River, we have a rented unit for them to use, so we want boat owners to use every, you know, stitch of effort to use shoreside facilities. Um, before they need to use their holding tanks for their boat, and kind of minimize the stress on our pumpout facilities, but when they're needed, they're absolutely there. Number seventeen, we would like to add, the bilge pumping of oily water is prohibited. And we'd like to remove that suction nozzle, nozzles to automatic bilge pumps shall be installed in such a manner. As to ensure that the bilge waste at the extreme bottom of the hull interior is not pumped while at the berth. Bilge pumps should be subject to inspection by the marina at any time, and disposable type absorbent bags and the bilges are recommended. Um, so again, the marina has every right to make sure that your bilge on your boat is working properly, we've had issues where oil gets into someone's. Bilge, something rusts out in the bottom of the boat, again, we talk about people who have not the nicest looking boats, unfortunately. Issues happen, issues could happen to brand new boats, it ends up in the bilge, it starts pumping outside, and now it's in our water, so. Um, you need to do everything you can to make sure that your bilge is in. Good working condition, and we have every right to inspect it if we don't think that it is, and it's going to cause a problem. Uh, we'd like to add number eighteen. Uh, all Town of Born waterways and Town of Born marinas are no discharge zones. Again, dealing with the, the bilges on the boats, um, even if it's, you know. There should be nothing discharging off the side of your boat, and I don't mean, you know, your AC unit that's running and clean water is coming out, I mean. The oily water that you don't want in your bilge, and it, it ends up in there, and then you think no one's looking, and you dump it off the side of your boat. We're looking. Uh, number, that should say nineteen, yes, we struck the eight, number nineteen, the speed limit for the boats operating in the vicinity of any Town of Born Marina. Striking inner, inner, uh, Finney's Harbor is designated to a slow no wake zone. Um, that's pretty straightforward, no one needs to be speeding through the marinas with docked vessels. The, number twenty, we would like to add the Town of Born, which will read, all boats must be removed from the Town of Born marinas by November first each. Uh, it should say by November first of each year, uh, or an additional fee of one hundred dollars per day may be charged. Um, so, at the end of the season, the, uh, the contract that the slipboarders sign are from May first to October thirty-first. Uh, so, starting on May first, boats can appear, sometimes they appear a little bit earlier, that's why we use the word May. Uh, we do add a fee if they aren't there in, outside of the contracted times, if they're there inside the contracted times, of course, they've paid their fees. Uh, ahead of time, before the boat hits the water, and vice versa, on the backside, May, we may charge a hundred dollars. Gets people going, sometimes people wait until November first to call their hauler, and now they're on the back of the list, and their boat's not coming out until December first, so. We'd like to get people moving, and hopefully that raise in fee will encourage people to get their boats out of the water in a timely fashion. Uh, number, which will now be twenty-one, no refunds of deposits on slips, uh, or, uh. Deposits or slip slash mooring rentals, so, any money sent, you know. We're pretty sure it's, we, our billing season is pretty standard for marinas, so we're pretty sure of who's going to be in there for that season, uh, so there'll be no refunds. Uh, number twenty-three, we'd like to change and have it read that, all parking is by permit only, two parking permits per slip slash mooring, so we're just adding mooring that wasn't in there previously. Will be issued to the leasing and temporary parking permits for guests are available at the marina offices. All leasing's and guests shall observe parking lot rules and signage to avoid being ticketed or towed at the leasing's expense. Uh, we'd like to strike number twenty-three, uh, twenty-three, uh, which we added to, uh, another section. Number twenty-four, we would like to change it for it to read, outside contractors or vendors are permitted to work in the marinas with permission of the marina management. And written authorization from, from the owner for the work to be performed. Permission to work on boats in the marinas is subject to certain conditions, regulations, insurance requirements, and administrative surcharges. Established by the marina to protect the marina and its customers, contractors, contractors slash vendors are required to check in and out with the marina office on a daily basis. Insurance is required in the amount no less than one million dollars before being allowed access to the marina. Any contractor slash vendor not complying with these conditions will be required to leave the premises immediately, so. Um, this basically just kind of outlays, if someone's coming to detail your boat, I want to make sure that, you know, Partier agreed to that, and it's not just a detailer showing up on property looking for some business, and they happened upon someone's boat. On the other extreme side, um, we don't allow work that's hazardous to boats. Uh, we don't allow someone to be getting welding done on the, you know, bridge of their boat while it's sitting in a marina full of other boats. So this just covers our basis for anyone coming onto a town property, uh, which was already stated in the regulations before, but it just cleans it up a little bit with the reading, re, uh, written authorization of the boat owner. Number twenty-five, the leasing customers, contractors, vendors may work on boats between the hours of eight AM and six PM. Um, so we changed that from eight PM, um, brought it down to six. Prior approval, or we're going to strike prior approval, the marina management is required to work on boats from eight PM to eight AM, we do, we're not going to allow that. Work, work performed on boats at the slip will only be permitted if it does not, A, interfere with other voters' peaceful enjoyment of their boat and slip. B, create an unsightly or dangerous con, uh, condition, C, creation of a condition that will discharge any pollutant in the water or onto the surrounding boats or docks. And D, produce an open flame or arc. For repairs that are more extensive in maintenance, which including, include power sanding, major paint or scraping, hot work, or any other hazardous work. Arrangements must be made to remove the boat from the marina. So again, touching on what we spoke about in the first, in the, in, uh, section twenty-four. Um, the hours of eight AM to six PM, if you want to go down and wash your own boat, great, but don't bring the power washer out at seven PM when someone's. Sitting beside you enjoying their boat, uh, so, kind of touches on quiet time, also touches on what you should and shouldn't be doing in your slip. Number twenty-six, fueling of vessels is only to be done at the fuel dock, no refueling of vessels take place in the berthing area, no fuel shall be transferred from any container. While the vessel is made fast to any mooring, town, landing, dock, or pier. Pretty straightforward, no one should be fueling their own vessels, um, that just leads to a spill almost every time, so. Um, we offer fuel docks, um, you can pull your boat, fuel it at the gas station down the street, uh, you cannot carry your jug of gas down the dock and fill yourself. Number twenty-seven, all shoreline adapters and dockside mail plugs. Must be compliant with the current electrical code and standards, no electrical cords may be ran across docks, fingers, gangways, or piers. Electrical cords are authorized for slips with power only. Lessor does not guarantee that electrical services will be provided if any shall be continuous. Marina reserves the right to terminate the use of any power tools, equipment, machinery, et cetera, will plug into marina electrical outlets if deemed necessary. Again, we offer power to a majority of our slips in the marinas, we do offer, uh, uh, slips without power, so this is to avoid. The person on the non-power side to run an extension cord across to the other side where the person is paying for and safely using the power, we do not want any accidents. Uh, we also don't want any cords going across the dock, um, and it also gives us kind of a little more. Leeway when someone's using their twenty-year-old power cord to plug in their forty-foot boat at one of the marinas, um, that probably shouldn't be happening, so. Let's see, number twenty-eight, uh, would be, the next three are going to be a complete addition, they were not in our regulations before, number twenty-eight, leasing does not. By these, by these presents, waive and relinquish to said lessor, its successors and assigns all claims of every kind arising during the period of time a dockage contract is in effect. Between the parties, as the result of any loss or damage to said boat or its equipment or its contents. Accept such loss or damage which results from the negligence of the employees of the lessor. While on board or moving said boat. Lisi further agrees for himself, herself, his or her agents, service employees. To indemnify and hold harmless the lessor for any claims, demands arising out of the ownership, use, or possession of said boat. Or the execution of this document, of this dockage agreement. Gives a little more protection to the town, again, things that weren't in the two thousand and four document that are across the board, Town marinas in our surrounding towns. Private marinas in our own town, um, so, we do need to protect ourselves in every way possible, because again, anything can happen. And I didn't read the second paragraph in that, which would say, it is mutually agreed that the marina shall not be held liable in any manner for the safekeeping or condition of the boat. Its tackling gear, equipment, or property either upon said boat or upon the premises of the marina for any cause whatsoever, or to the injury of the owner or invitees occasioned by any cause upon the marina premises or adjacent thereto. Number twenty-nine, the lessor is not responsible for any injury, loss, or damage caused by the failure of any slash all mooring devices, dock lines, fender, et cetera, provided by the leasing. If something is provided by the marina, we use outside contractors for our moorings, so we use a very well-known town company. Um, if you go and add your own one-eighth inch dock line to that, and your boat snaps, that is not our fault, we have provided you with the safest equipment. Um, our docks are inspected and worked on every year, um, so if there's something that the town is providing you that is not working, tell us, we'll replace it. If you go on your own and you do it yourself, unfortunately, people don't use the safest equipment, um, all the time, so. Uh, number thirty, in an emergency situation, the lessor shall be permitted to move leasing's unattended boat to a safer location if possible. Provided however, that the lessor shall not be required to provide this service. In the event such service is provided, leasing will be billed at prevailing rates for the services rendered or incurred. And leasing shall be required to pay all costs incurred by lessor on the lessy behalf. Lessy shall indemnify. And hold lessor safe and harmless for all liability, injury, loss, or damage caused by or resulting to lessy's boat due to the, due to an emergency situation. The lessy remains solely responsible for securing his slash her boat and protecting it in the event of any severe weather or such fortuitous occurrence. Um, so again, another, another thing putting us in a little more of a safekeeping, where things happen, you know, I'm not going to say the things that could happen on a boat, but. Big, yeah, yeah, I'm not going to say it, because, but.
Don't jinx it.
Yeah, 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 right? Um, but, uh, things can happen, um, if we need to move a boat, we don't, you know, we're not a marina that holds a spare key, and I'm not going to move. Partier A because Partier B doesn't like the way he tied up to his boat, um. This is in an emergency, I don't want to move your boat, I, I don't know a boat, so, I, you know, I, I, you know, I have friends who own boats, so. You know, I'm not going to move your boat because I don't like the way you docked, I'm going to address you personally, um, and I say hi, because I'm the marina manager. Um, but neither are any of my employees, um, we're going to contact you, but in the event of an emergency, and if we can do anything to help, we will move vessels. Let's see, number thirty-one is, uh, some grammatical changes. And the last part would be to add all your names.
That was a lot, that's a lot of changes.
That was a lot, a lot of changes, from twenty-one years, yeah, twenty-one years of changes.
I saw the, who was on the board then, and I was like, oh, wow, yeah.
I don't know those people, so.
Any comments or questions, I mean, we could, we do have more readings on this, and it is almost ten o'clock, so I'm not sure if the select board has anything to say, or do we want to, go ahead MJ.
I just have a couple of quick things, so overall, I think there's a lot of greatly great changes, bringing things up to date. Um, a couple of things I had on the section four point O for the insurance, where you talked about a million dollar per occurrence. Uh, you need to have what the aggregate requirement is, so is it a million, a million occurrence, a million aggregate, or do you have some other requirement? Uh, section twenty-two on the parking, where you added the mooring, is that a new thing that you're providing? Two parking permits per mooring, or had you already done, always done that, and it just wasn't in the reg?
Yeah, always done that, it was not in the regulations. Every one of our customers receives two parking permits, everyone else can get a guest pass for the day.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes.
Um, on the twenty-four, which is another thing on the insurance. I think you crossed out too much stuff, and you have something in the note about adding what kind of insurance. about adding what kind of insurance. So that language has to be looked at and, uh, and then, in our next time, I'd like to have a little discussion about adding something for 32 that talks about making reasonable accommodations for people with disabilities who have to contact the marina manager and request, uh, an accommodation and that, you know, the marina manager will work with them on that. It's come out in a prior meeting and we didn't really address it, but this might be a place to do it or in some sort of other policy. So I'd like to have that in the discussion next time. Other than that, thank you very much, I appreciate that contribution.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, so next, we have a lot, we have quite a bit left here. Fee hearing. Proposal to increase rates at town's public marinas developed by DNR and Shore and Harbor Committee.
Good evening, Hannah Lawrence, DNR Director. So we are proposing to increase the fees at the three tunnel borne marinas. So presently Monument Beach is $112 a foot for non-electric and $117 a foot for electric slips. We have the Taylor Point Marina at $112 a foot and $133 a foot with electric. And the Pecassett River Marina presently at $92 a foot, and there is no electric offered at that marina. So for Taylor Point, we would look to increase the rate for a non-electricity slip to $185, and that was from the $112 a foot. And increase the rate for a slip with electricity to $200, and that was $133 a foot. At Monument Beach, the non-electricity would, we'd look to increase to $175, which would have been $112 a foot. And the rate increase to electricity, $185, to $117 a foot. We are also proposing to increase the seasonal mooring rate at Monument Beach. So these are the marina moorings, not the private moorings. So presently, they're $1,000, looking to increase to $2,100. The town does all the inspections and, you know, pays for all of that to be done, installations. So that takes off the, that cost from those customers where if they had a private mooring, they'd incur all those fees themselves. The Pecassett River, we would look to increase to $150 a foot, where it is presently at $92 a foot. So this is definitely a significant increase in revenue for the town kind of across all of these marinas. So the current net is $726,088, with a projected net of $1,174,979, which is a pretty sizable increase in revenue for the town.
Okay. Any converse, well, first, does somebody want to make a motion to accept the fee hearing? I mean, the fee proposals here, and we can discuss.
I'll make a motion to accept the fee proposal as presented.
All right, motion from MJ, do we have a second? From Anne Marie, any further discussion?
When was the last time the fees were increased?
I'm sorry, what was the?
What was that, Peter?
When was the last increase?
I think 2014.
Oh, so it's been seven years.
It's been a number of years, yeah.
Peter, go ahead.
Yes, and when would these increases take effect?
The proposal for 2026.
This new season.
All right, so right away, that's the, do they have room is everywhere to phase it in? And over a few years, and I just think that we need to do it, you know, ASAP.
All right, so we have a motion from MJ, a second from Anne Marie. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. All right, Janice, thank you for your waiting and being here till so late.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, all of you. All right, moving on, we have licensing. We have a, a, so... Okay, yeah, okay, yeah, so I was looking at something else, sorry. A, we have a new Class 1 dealer license for Do Dish LLC brokerage only, 1104 Route 28A, Unit 1 Born. And then we have the new Class 1 dealers license for Stewart Knockabout LLC brokerage only, 1104 Route 28A, Unit 2 and Born. Do we have someone here to speak on this real quick on this evening? Hi, I'm so sorry you had to be here so late.
That's all right, I hope I made your easiest job of the night.
Perfect. Go right ahead, just state your name and your town, your village and where you live.
Um, I'm Amy Dowkins-Stevens and I live in Pecassett.
Okay.
And I own Do Dish and Stewart Knockabout LLC. And I sell Triad trailers and I need a license.
Perfect, I like it.
So I can do that. It says that I'm there brokerage only, but some, no, I sell some used trailers, but I also sell new trailers from Triad directly. So I don't know if that makes anything different, but it should be brokerage and new.
That is included, it's understood that that's, okay.
Okay, that's understood, thank you for clarifying though. All right, so do we have a motion to accept the licensing on Class 1 dealer license for Do Dish and for the Stewart Knockabout?
Do we have to do them separately?
Do we have to do them separately?
You could do them together.
I can do them together, okay. To approve them, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so Peter made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, MJ, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we have Anne Marie.
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Melissa, oh, MJ?
Yes.
And Melissa, yes. Good luck!
Thank you!
That was pretty easy. All right, so now we have the consent agenda. So do you want me to do the license renewals first? So do, can I do it all together, or do I need to read all those off? No, okay. So we have the consent agenda, we have A, annual license renewal as attached, common vitular auto Class 1, 2, and 3, and entertainment. We have B, accept a $50 donation to the fire department. C, accept a $200 donation to the council on aging. D, vote to open the warrant for the May 4th, 2026 annual town meeting on December 8th, 2025 at 8:30 a.m. And close it on Friday, March 13th, 2026 at 4:00 p.m. We have a vote to open the warrant for the May 4th, 2026 special town meeting on Monday, December 8th, 2025 at 8:30 and close it on Friday, March 27th, 2026 at 4:00 p.m. Vote to extend the, F is the vote to extend maximum useful life of the residential grinder pump replacement project authorized at 2025 annual town meeting not to exceed 10 years. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So will.
All right. We have a motion from Anne Marie, a second from Peter, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
And Melissa, yes. Unanimated. All right. Not so bad. And now we have the Town Administrator's Report.
Which I will read. Without pain.
Can we dismiss her?
I was thinking that, okay.
Okay. Town Administrator's Report.
Oh, no, because we have to do the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
December 2nd, 2025 Select Board Meeting. I-Swim has diverted 21.45 tons of food waste from the landfill so far in 2025. The town will be conducting a leak test for the archives building roof tomorrow and Thursday. The Chair of the Board of Governors is aware and will also meet us there tomorrow. We are aware of a problem with two of the HVAC controllers at the community building that are not communicating. We are currently troubleshooting this issue and have a call into the technicians. We hope to have everything resolved no later than Thursday of this week. We are moving forward with the seawall evaluation at Chester Park and it is tentatively scheduled to kick off in December 12th. And lastly, the second public input meeting for the skate park and basketball court at the community building is scheduled for December 9th at 5:15 p.m. Everyone is welcome.
Thank you very much. So we just have one set of minutes for 11:18, 2025.
Motion to approve as presented.
All right, so we have a motion from Anne Marie, second from Peter. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Okay. And commuter reports, anyone?
Well, South Side Fire Station met again and there's been more updates. And we did approve some invoices, the changes are on the website. And there's also the invoices and the monies that are being approved. There's, there's a lot of information there that shows before and after vote and everything, so people can really dig into the numbers. So they've really been good about giving us everything we're asking for in details, which is great, so.
That's good news.
Yes.
All right, correspondent?
Correspondent, December 2nd, 2025. A, letter from N-E-C-S-E-M-A regarding nicotine product restrictions. B, planning board resignation letter, womp womp. C, Upper Cape CRT, school meeting minutes, October 9th, 2025. D, Xfinity channel changes. E, Xfinity price changes. F, email from John York regarding Cape Cod Bridges Program's comments. And G, email from John York regarding Cape Cod Bridges Program Draft EIS.
Okay. Thank you. So future agenda items related to correspondence and other items of future discussions?
I would just like to touch base on what's going on with the lowline roads. I think that's something that's in the future, you know, but I just want to see if there's any new information that Tim could give us on any plans he might have. And the other item I'm curious about is just the work that was stalled because of the shutdown with the government, the stormwater work. I think that was the only thing that was impacted.
Oh, yeah, the drainage.
Yeah, just want to, just curious about what, what's going to happen with that project now that the weather's getting colder, but...
One of the other things that I was, just a regroup on where we're at with our goals.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, starting to tackle our capital planning goal.
Yeah, sounds good.
I don't know if this needs to be an agenda item, but we talked about the marinas tonight and I guess we'd like an update on the tile of sand that we've had over at Margaret Beach by the entrance forever and ever. I know the Town Administrator gave us an update at one point and I was just looking for an update when she has time.
And then I'd like to see, I mean, it doesn't have to be right away, but I know I'd like to talk with Born Historic, maybe Steve Philbrook at some point and talk, you know, about the seal at some point, just so that we don't forget about it completely. All right, moving on. So we have next meeting dates, December 16th, Select Board, January 6th, 13th, 27th, 26th as Select Board. And we have January 20th, 26th is the Sewer Commission. In our next discussion, we have two folks that need to recuse and once they're, they're gone, we can discuss this.
Just I have to give myself a partnership permit discussion and I will be leaving the meeting.
Thank you.
For the record.
I know Marley is not doing well speaking, so I was going to, I was going to ask you, should we table it or does it need to be discussed now?
I'm going to ask to please table 19A, but I do want to talk to you very briefly about 19B.
Perfect, that sounds great, all right. So MJ is already gone, thank you, get some sleep.
No, I just wrapped the...
Okay, just making sure.
So for the capital plan and funding, I would like the board's permission to request $100,000 of free cash
Okay.
for the FY '27 capital budget. I have already prepared everything and it is in the capital book, but I would like you to support that before I take it to the Capital Outlay Committee on Monday.
Okay.
I have, I have put, and which I'll show you when we get to the capital budget, but later in January, but I have put money aside on the, on the five-year capital plan for the next five years for this funding.
Okay.
I recommend we do this every town meeting on a regular basis to go for funding instead of asking for a lump sum upfront. We don't know how much it's going to cost and I don't want to ask for borrowing authority because then we have to pay, if we do the plan, just like we did with the CWOP, if we do the plan, but if it doesn't result in construction, then we have to pay off that note within two years. So I'd rather do this on a free cash basis, one town meeting at a time. And once we start getting into the work and have a better idea of the scope and what we're actually dealing with in reality, then we can refine the budget going forward and only ask what we think we can spend in a year rather than asking for multiple years that we're not going to be able to spend right away anyway.
Sure. Okay, so does, do we have a motion to support the FY '27 free cash basis $100,000?
So will.
All right, so we have a motion from Peter, do we have a second?
Second.
From Jean. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, let's do the roll call. Uh, Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Okay. And with that said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
So move.
Okay. All right. Yeah, let me go, Peter?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. All right, thank you all, the late ones, sorry about that.